Good evening. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting of December 20th, 2012. Before we start tonight, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the lives lost in Sandy Book's school in Connecticut six days ago, so if you could just please take the time to contemplate that. You know, and again, before we start, none of us possess the language to express the feelings we have in response to the horrors of visiting to a community that is very similar to ours. And it's appropriate, we must reflect on this event and address the trauma it faces. We also must move beyond expressions and discussions and we must act, act to prevent this American phenomenon that's become commonplace, and I think the shame is ours. So in the days and the weeks to come, it's my hope that the Northampton citizens will petition this council to respond, and we will be considering an appropriate response within our authority and will present a more formal proposal by our next meeting, which will be the beginning of the new year. A new year that I hope finds a solution to the consequences of a culture that foments and facilitates these obscene acts and affronts to all that we consider humane and affront to what we consider to be civil society. So please contact us with your suggestions and thoughts, too, if you have any. Now it's time for the public comment portion before we convene, and anyone's invited to speak on any topic, please state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes, please. There's a timer here behind me. Please respect it. You'll be allowed to run over if you're honestly just wrapping up, but if the speaker does not respect the rules, I reserve the right to recess the meeting, have the camera shut down, and we won't start again until the speaker has cleared the council chambers. And the speaker will also forfeit the privilege of speaking for this council in the future. So first up, and I know we won't have this gentleman violating that, Jack Horner.
I'm doing my best. Good evening, councilors. My name is Jack Horner. I live at 46, ladies and gentlemen, Florence, and I'm here to urge you to support the State Hospital Memorialization Project, which was presented at your last meeting with a funding request of $75,000. I have a long history with the State Hospital. I served on the CAC for many years and was one of the people who, recognizing that we would not be able to do to save Old Main and, you know, save many of the buildings, advocated for the Memorialization Committee. I served on the Memorialization Committee, whose report I found in my files this afternoon as I was looking, dated May 31st, 2007. I also found in my files a document called "The Fountain Project" from 2003, and another set of documents about the Fountain Project dating back to 1999. So this is a project that has been important to people, has been advocated for by people for many years. When I was on the Memorialization Committee, one of the things that we realized was that it was going to be very hard to have any physical tangible memorial, and if we were going to have one, the Fountain Project was going to be it. That was the case back in 2007 when we did our report. It seems to me it's the same thing today. At that time, the CPC, which I served as the first chair of, was just putting its policies and procedures together, and that money wasn't available right then. So I'm very glad that people have come together again, put an application together, and applied for CPA money. I felt then and feel today that this is an ideal use of CPA money, and so I think it's just outstanding. I read the application very, very carefully online, and as I wrote in a letter to you, I was particularly impressed by the letters of support, which were varied, heartfelt, and I felt really meaningful, and if you've had a chance to read them, remind you of the many reasons why we need in this city to remember the State Hospital, which was such a big part of Northampton. So it's a good project. The application is very, very well done, in my opinion. Certainly if I were on the CPC today, I would have had no hesitation in voting for it. It's got, I think, significant community support, and it is a project that, you know, at one point, the State Hospital was the biggest employer in town. It's just a huge part of our history, and this project will be meaningful and important, and I hope you'll support it with your votes tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Casper.
Good evening. My name is Mary Casper. I live at 106 High Street in Florence. I'm here tonight to ask the council to postpone approval of the financial order dated December 6th, 2012, that authorizes the Office of Planning and Development to expend funds from the tourism gift account for gateway and other signage, or pavement markings for plantings, et cetera. I'm particularly concerned that this open-ended ability to expend these funds, regardless of the amount of money involved, is too broad in scope, impinges on the longest-term role of the Northampton Arts Council to oversee public art projects on city properties, and allows the Office of Planning and Development to significantly change our built environment without guaranteeing any public input or process whatsoever. There has been a good deal of criticism from the arts community about the process used to create what has been called artistic wayfinding signage on the Main Street Rail Trail Bridge. I'm adding my voice to this criticism. I questioned the process back in April when I first learned of it, and I'm giving you copies of my correspondence with Wayne Fiden on this issue. Much of my criticism is based on the fact that I wrote the city's public art plan and its percent of the art program in the early 1990s, when I was the city's art coordinator. I'm well aware of what projects fall under the purview of the Northampton Arts Council. The Rail Trail Wayfaring Signage is such a project that you are seemingly codifying the Office of Planning and Development's role in further such projects is very troubling to me, especially in view of how the Rail Trail Bridge project was carried out. There is going to be a meeting with representatives of the Northampton Arts Council and the City Council's Committee on Cultural and Recreation Services in early January. I would ask that the council postpone its vote on this financial order until after that committee meeting. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. Alan Raska.
My name's Alan Raska. I live at 7 Jones Drive in Northampton, Massachusetts. I'm here to speak in favor of you approving the $75,000 for the Northampton State Hospital project. I worked at the State Hospital as a psychologist for 15 years and retired from Department of Mental Health after a period of new service. During my 15 years at Northampton State Hospital, I came to appreciate the history, significance, and scope of what Northampton State Hospital meant to the patients, to the employees, and to the community at large. Just so many people from the community were patients there, worked there. We had multiple generations, several family members at a time, either patients and/or employees. And I was so shocked and dismayed when I heard that the $75,000 was not approved for this project. I just couldn't believe that something of this nature and this scope and, you know, this 125-year-plus history would be just pushed aside and forgotten over relatively few dollars in the scheme of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Joseph Blumenthal.
Hi, I'm Joseph Blumenthal. I live at 39 Chapel Street. I am the, here to speak in favor of the memorial project. I'm the chair of the Citizens Advisory Council for the State Hospital Committee to create this memorial project. The committee's been in existence for a long time, and almost from the beginning of our time, the idea of memorializing the State Hospital was part of what the city wanted to have happen up there. The city created the CAC because they recognized that this piece of land was just not, not just another, any old parcel to be, to have a new subdivision on. They wanted to make it special. They wanted to make it something that would really enhance Northampton in a lot of different ways, and one of those ways was to recognize that something really important happened up there for 150 years that needs to be remembered. We created a committee to have, explore ways of memorializing it. We held public hearings. The best, the best thing that came up for us to have was this Fountain Project idea that's, that the, and then we took it to the Community Preservation Act, and they saw fit to recommend that the money be spent. It was a very high priority for them for historic preservation. This whole process has been a very public one, and it has been, it's been, and actually an initiative of the city government, starting with the CAC, you know, the City Council back 25 years ago creating the CAC, the CAC deciding this was important, the Community Preservation Committee deciding that this was important. And it seems entirely fitting to me, the city council should continue along this line and recognize that this is just the next step towards creating this memorial. It is, we, if we had been, we were in negotiations with Mass Development over where the memorial should be. They couldn't have given us a better place because the fountain is exactly where it was when it was in front of Old Main. We're going to be able to have a sign that says, "You've been standing here in 1950. This is what you would have seen," and we'll have a picture of Old Main on the sign. It couldn't be a better place. We've heard, we know that it's a lot of money, but if you, you're familiar, I'm sure, with how much it costs to do any public works project, such as the roundabout in, in front of Loc Park and the, you know, potential pocket park out in front of City Hall, all those things are very expensive. This is not an extreme amount of money for a public works project. I could speak longer, but my time is about up. I am planning to stay here in case when it comes time for you to discuss this, you have questions that you want to ask me, I can tell you a lot more about the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Blumenthal.
I'm Barbara Blumenthal. I also live at 39 Chapel Street, and I am on Historical Commission as well as being on the Memorialization Committee for the State Hospital, and I'm here to speak to you in favor of that project. And I'm sorry that we couldn't, no one from the committee could be here at your last council meeting. I think if we'd been aware that there were questions and concerns, we would have tried to be here to answer those. I'm going to try and answer a few of those first. We do have a letter in hand. I don't have it with me tonight, but we do have a letter from Mass Development to, I believe it's to the mayor, indicating their intention to donate the land for the park to the city once a few, you know, what is it called? The i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, but we do have that letter committing them to do that. I also wanted to emphasize that, I know a number of you had said that you thought that this was in an isolated spot that really wasn't open to the public or available to the public, and the State Hospital, the development there, is very connected to a series of walking trails and the bike path, you know, not just the walks along the river, but the Earl Street connection and connecting to East Hampton so that, and there will be signs in various places on the State Hospital property in other parts of the city directing people to this memorial. So it will be visible and publicized to people at large. And I think, I also wanted to address why we hadn't solicited or done a lot of fundraising before we knew whether or not we would be granted money from the CPA. And in a way, we're kind of in a catch-22 situation because we did approach some people who really were interested but didn't want to commit until they knew whether we'd have the bulk of our funds in hand, and you all seem to be in the opposite position that you don't want to commit funds until we have others. But we're certainly planning to ask a great number of people for donations for this, and the Historical Commission set aside many artifacts from the hospital, bricks, pieces of their doors, all sorts of things that we are hoping that the city will auction in order to raise money, as well as asking other businesses and people directly. And I just, again, we'll stay if you have other questions. I can't clear up everything, but I do want to read just a very small part of a letter from Rebecca McCauley, who was a former patient and a former employee at the State Hospital. And this is a letter that the Gazette has not published yet, we think, because of other gun control and other issues that have come up recently that have been, so this couldn't be in there. But she's saying, "I can appreciate the city council's concern over the cost, the location of the Northampton State Hospital Fountain and the small park. The question comes down to basically, is it worth it? Northampton State Hospital is just an intellectual topic for some, a deep curiosity for others, but there are still many of us left in the area with active memories of daily life there. Both staff members and patients now live ordinary lives in our neighborhoods." There's one more short.
No, that's fine.
"In our neighborhoods, but with stories living inside of them that should be told and remembered as examples of what happens when one group of people has total control of another group of people, this great social experiment that played itself out in our city for better or worse. Considering the stories of life and death, the countless moments of humanity and tribulation that Northampton State Hospital painted on the broad canvas of our region, and the countless lives touched in one way or another, we owe it to ourselves to never forget what happened on the hill. Now that the buildings are gone, the fountain is one physical piece that remains as an apt reminder of what happened there, to remind us that this was a physical place that we built that would change people's lives forever and leave a permanent mark on Northampton. This fountain is a physical remnant that should stand as a reminder to all of us how good intentions can have long-lasting effects that we do not expect or intend, and to be very, very careful of how we treat one another." Thank you.
I consider that two testimonies, so this one. As well, Jackie Duda, please.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Duda. I live at 56 Laurel Street, which is in the vicinity of the Northampton State Hospital. And I'm here also to speak about the Fountain Project. And to give you a little bit of historical significance, I want to pass out a copy of this photo. One for each side. Thank you, Jackie. That's a photo taken somewhere in the 1850s of the front of the State Hospital. I don't know if everyone, if you have ever been up there to see the old building when it stood or not, but that's what it looked like many years ago. And I think Rebecca McCauley's letter was just so heartfelt. It said a lot of what I was going to say on behalf of patients. I myself worked there from 1970 to 1977 and saw a lot of the suffering and pain that she speaks of in her letter. And Mr., our first speaker.
Jack Horner.
Thank you. Made reference to the significance of the employment at the State Hospital. It wasn't just the biggest employer for the last 50 years, it was the biggest employer for the last 150 years. And that was a significant part of our community history. The State Hospital and employees there, the part that it played in the economy locally, and the way that it formed the social norms of our community to this day, a lot of that was because the State Hospital and its employees and even its patients in this last 50 or so years have been really woven into the fabric of our society here in Northampton. I like to think of that site now as kind of a battleground. It was a battleground where patients suffered mental illness, where people were abused, where people were helped, where people were cured, where people had happy moments and very, very sad and devastating moments, and where employees thrived and grew and lived there with their families, and tradesmen lived. That hospital was at one time a fully encompassed community. It had its own water supply, its own fire department, its own police department, its own laundry. It grew all of its own food, made all of its own clothing. It was an important part of our history. It's a, it's a little bit of a bill, but as I hear Mr. Blumenthal says, it's very expensive when you do a public project. We have to, you know, hire people to oversee the project. We can't do it as committee members, so the costs rise. An important point to make, though, in that is that I've been involved with this since 1999. I was one of the first people, and back then, you know, we could restore this fountain for about $20,000, maybe $25,000. Now the cost is up to $45,000. In addition to that, there is significant in-kind support that's been offered to us by Mass Development, a lot of which we've already used. That's not going to come to us again. They had a commitment in their contract originally to offer some in-kind support to this memorial, and it's gone. So if we put the project off, we don't get that back. We lose that. And finally, if we don't do this project now, it's never going to be done. I mean, I've been working on it for 12 years, and that's enough time already. So please support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Riddell.
My name's Tom Riddell, 33 Aldridge Street, Ward 1. From 1998 through 2005, I taught a first-year seminar at Smith College on the history of the Northampton State Hospital. After a hiatus, I taught the course again this fall. Over these nine years, the course has enrolled almost 120 students. The request for proposals for the development of Northampton State Hospital after its closing in 1993 called on the developers, along with the City's Citizens Advisory Committee, to mark the history of the hospital. That directive was vague and has taken quite some time to bear fruit. The students in my classes have always focused on this aspect of the redevelopment of the Village at Hospital Hill, now Village Hill at Northampton. They've shown simplicity, insight, complexity, and passion in their writing about a hypothetical obligation. One consistent conclusion has been the profound importance of recognizing and acknowledging the complicated history of the hospital and its close relationship to the evolution of understanding and treatment of mental health issues in the United States over the last 150 years. This year, the 15 students in my class took on a class project of contributing to the realization of the memorial park, with ideas for historical markers to help visitors learn about the life and death of the hospital. Here's a sampling of quotes from their final projects. First, "Memorialization for me is not purely about a concrete end result. Increasing awareness serves to put the hospital into public memory and keeps the hospital from being forgotten." Second, "In 1876, the fountain was installed in front of the main entrance. Restoring the fountain will serve as a memorial to the patients and employees who lived and worked at the hospital." Third, "I learned how people have varying perspectives on the hospital." Four, "It is virtually impossible to incorporate every aspect and analysis into one memorial with the proper treatment that each deserves. The idea of one memorial pleasing everyone is ludicrous because someone will always criticize it for its faults rather than praising the memorial for what it represents. I sincerely hope that you approve the CPC's award to this project and help to fulfill the city's responsibility to recognize the history of the hospital as it is transformed in heritage."
Thanks. Thank you. Nora Albert.
Hi. My name is Nora Albert. I live at 27 Olander Drive, right next to the walking path that is now labeled Hospital Trail, I believe. And I come with a few biases. One is that I am a psychiatric professional and devoted my career to people with serious mental illness, and have been aware before I moved here about the hospital, saw some interviews with people on, you know, being discharged. I live on the grounds there and have felt that the memorial is a really great idea. And what you talked about at the beginning of, when we had the moment of silence, I think anything that brings light to mental illness, which I'm sure this memorial will do, is great, and as a community, it shows a caring attitude to a population that carries with it a lot of stigma. And the third thing is that I was in the class, I audited the class at Smith, so I was a Smithie for one semester, and the, the class for these students who came from all over, China, Brooklyn, they were from everywhere, from my perspective, the class was transformative for them as people. I think they came into it, who knows? Maybe they thought it'd be the easiest one of the seminars or what? I don't know what brought them to it, but each and every one of them, as I said, was transformed by this experience and learned a tremendous amount. So the kinds of things they want to add to it will help other people maybe be transformed in the way they view mental illness and the treatment, and it's not going to be all bad. One very fascinating thing to me was, somewhere in the middle, they had this wonderful vocational program that Massachusetts outlawed. I'm watching the clock.
No, no, hang on.
Oh, okay.
You're fine.
She's going to kick me if I'm late, but I just lost my train of thought. Oh, yeah. They had this amazing vocational program, and the state at some point outlawed it because it was abusive to, you know, patients, they weren't getting paid, so on and so forth. Well, today, vocational programs are pretty much the state of the art. So it's interesting that like 50 or whatever it was, 75 years ago, it was outlawed, and now it's state of the art for people recovering from serious mental illness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Alicia Ralph.
Hi, Alicia Ralph. This is Ms. Sam Dero, and I'm a member of the reuse committee. And on January 5th, you'll be able to recycle all the gift styrofoam that you receive, your Christmas trees, and, mm, 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 something else, I just, I don't know why I'm blanking. And just a, just another plug for a permanent reuse center, because today I was at the transfer station on Locust Street, and look what I found that would have just been thrown in the landfill if I hadn't rescued this former Pleasant Street video for the Forbes Library. That's all.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. That's all we have signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Downey Meyer, 516 North Farms Road. I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have when you consider this matter later on, but also as a citizen, I'm a newcomer to Northampton. I've been here seven and a half years. I know this is a community that values people who have deep roots. And as I was talking about your consideration of this project with my 89-year-old, they said to me, you know, what is, you know, what is this place? What is Hospital Hill? And I explained to them as best I could, gave them the capsule summary, how it had started out as such a bold and humane experiment, and how it had declined through neglect into something that was very painful for the people working there and the people who were patients there, and that what this project was trying to do was preserve some connection to that past. And I think that I could look at them and see somebody who had lived in this community as so many of the people who came before us, the CPC, have real knowledge, in some case, decades of knowledge of this place. I'm a newcomer, and it was being torn down as I arrived in the community, and I've seen it subtly erased from the Village at Hospital Hill, and then the hospital left the name of the development. And, you know, in another 10 or 20 years, it's further erased. You saw the picture of the hospital in its glory. I just want to show you in the package that was presented to us, the picture of the fountain as it stands now in the DPW yard, surrounded by vines. Because I think for me, as chair of the CPC, one thing is, with a lot of historic preservation, you have an opportunity to preserve it now, and if you don't, it's lost. And you've heard that this fountain could have been restored for half of what it's been now. And so if we don't do this now in the hospital, and that sits out falling apart in the DPW yard, it will be gone forever, never to return. We had a project with the bridge out in Leeds that had the same sort of considerations. So I hope... So I hope that you take this opportunity to support this project, to realize that a lot of people have worked a very long time to bring it this far. And that we, as the CPC, in funding it, funded it at less than the full amount because we wanted to see the buy-in from the community financially as well. But we felt that by awarding it a substantial portion of the amount requested, that we would spark the contributions, the further contributions from the community. Because there have already been a great number of people who have devoted substantial time to this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Downey. Is there anyone else who wish to speak at this time? We shall convene then. The local call the roll.
President.
Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Here. For an approval of the minutes of December 6, 2012. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Now's the period that we come to with Proclamations, Resolutions, Awards, and Recognitions. We're going to one-minute announcements, I understand. So Councilor, do you? Councilor LeBarge?
Yes. Quickly, I want to wish everybody, all families in the City of North Hampton in Ward 6, happy holidays and a safe new year.
Anyone else? Councilman Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. This is just an announcement. The Transportation and Parking Commission is accepting applications for the parking committee, which we've renewed a commitment to have a committee that's actually in the ordinance. So we're having, we're reconvening that committee. And the applications are available online at the Transportation Parking Commission website. And applications can be filled out and given to Mary Madora on the second floor of City Council, the City Hall.
Any other announcements?
I just want to echo that there's an enormous amount of work coming up for Transportation and Parking Commission. We'd like as many people as possible. We want their, we'd like their input. And this committee, I think, will expedite all of that and it'll, it'll take a lot of load off of the, off the commission itself. And so please, apply. Please. We're expecting a huge deluge of applications.
It's as close to begging as you can get. Anyone else? How about now, Proclamations, Resolutions, Awards, and Recognizations? Mayor, do you have anything you need to proclaim?
Okay.
Okay. The mayor says Merry Christmas.
Into you.
All right. So we're going to the late files. This is appointments to the Board of Health from Mayor David J. Narckowitz. And I'll read you the preamble. If you'll indulge me, "I received a number of applications from highly qualified members of our community, making the selection process very difficult. My goal for these two new appointments was to ensure that our Board of Health is both diverse and well-rounded in terms of professional background, education, and experience. And in particular, I strive to identify potential members who could bring new skills and experience that currently do not exist on the board. After reviewing all of the excellent applications very carefully and in consultation with our Health Director, I believe I put forward two individuals who achieved my goal in this process and will be excellent additions to our Board of Health. Therefore, pursuant to Chapter 249 of the Acts of 2012, I'm submitting two names for appointment to the Board of Health. Cindy Suapis and William Hargraves." And this was referred by the city, by the, the appointments and evaluations with, that you do, should we speak to this?
Yeah.
Yes, suspend rule.
So moved.
There's a motion to suspend Rule 38?
Second.
Actually, why are we, why are we suspending Rule 38? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. All those in favor of suspending rules for the late file?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And now Councilor Specter.
Well, I'd like to move the, move the nomination.
I'll second that.
Would you like to speak to?
Yes, I would. First of all, I want to explain, you know, I know all of us are trying to cut down on late files. But as I've explained before, sometimes our meeting, which was on Monday, we'd have to then wait until the next meeting to have the appointments approved. So it would be about six weeks late. And so it just, again, if anyone has a problem with us coming in with those late files, please talk to me. We'll see what we can do. We could change our meeting time. But it seems like the best way we could do this is to get these nominees through without waiting even more, more time, up to six weeks. Two great candidates, and I want to say, I spoke to the mayor on this, and there are a lot of great candidates who came through and really great people on the board now, most of whom are healthcare professionals, doctors, and nurses. These two candidates are in the healthcare field, but in different ways. So Cynthia Suapis is somebody who's actually works in the field of healthcare, communications in healthcare, which is really important, communicating how the doctors communicate with patients, how do we communicate about healthcare issues. It seems like that's something that's very important in terms of Board of Health. It seems like a great addition. And William Hargraves actually has background in industrial inspections. So he's somebody who brings a different kind of perspective to this, has actually done health inspections of various kinds of facilities. So two great candidates. We had a good meeting with them and we unanimously recommend them to the council.
Any other discussion on candidates? Councilman Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor for preparing a memorandum regarding his nominations. And I also especially want to thank the committee for finishing their minutes before they needed to and sending them on to the council. And especially in the minutes to see the particular qualifications and interests of the candidates was really important. It's something that I was complaining about earlier. And, you know, sometimes it's nice to see that my complaints are answered. So thank you. And I feel very comfortable with these candidates.
Anytime.
Any other comments? Then we'll move for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? They're approved. Another late file. Actually, we have a series of late files, just to prepare you. This being the end of the year, this is the last council meeting for 2012, so we'll have late files to deal with here. This is requested by the city clerk, Wendy Mazza, for taxi license. You have the application before you. This is for Cosmic Cab Company. And you'll probably recall Jeffrey Miller, who's come before, several times before. And he's got himself another car, another vehicle, 2003 Chrysler DT Cruze. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.
Just a quick question. How many licensed cab companies do we have in the city now?
I don't know.
I'm going to guess three.
I, as I, that sounds close to right, but I wouldn't, we had more. When Jeffrey applied, actually, you'll recall that there was some concern, there were some limousine companies that were functioning, these limousine companies were de facto cab companies. And the police cracked down on those licenses. Circumstances have changed since then. Jeffrey Miller's complied with that and actually is, I believe, was the first to comply. Then the closing of the Green Cab Company, which then one of the drivers bought that company and turned it into another cab company. And the other one, I don't recall. But I think that's about right. I think that's where we stand now.
That's what I figured. I was going to offer kudos to Jeffrey Miller.
Well, Jeffrey's definitely very enterprising in building, building a business that clearly has a need here in the community. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any more late files? Oh, not right now. Okay. What's up now? Oh, okay. We are going to recess for Finance Committee and the Finance Chair is now sitting here. And for those of you who missed last week, David Murphy was elected the Chair of Finance in the new shakeup as a result of the response to the charter. I now pass over the chair to, to Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Councilor. Mary, will you call the roll of Finance? Here.
Here.
Councilor LeBarge? President.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Our agenda tonight is kind of backwards. We have the financial orders and then after that is actually the financial narrative and the plan itself. So what I'd suggest we do is, before we do the orders, have the mayor present his plan and explain things, and then we'll deal with the orders after that. Is that agreeable to everyone? And since the mayor is permanently recognized, I would give the floor to the mayor.
Thank you very much for your share and good evening, members of the Finance Committee and members of the City Council. I wanted to kind of begin my presentation tonight with just a quick, actually, going to read a quick paragraph just to set the stage from my budget message that I delivered to you on January. And I'll read this quick paragraph. "This challenge of balancing our day-to-day operational needs with the critical need to make long-term investments in our capital infrastructure, be it roads, buildings, equipment, or our aging systems for water, sewer, stormwater, and flood control must be addressed. Our capital planning process, scheduled for this fall, will update our five-year capital plan and prioritize project needs, which we will pay for with capital stabilization funds infused by anticipated departmental turnbacks from the close of 2012." Fast forward to the future here, December 12th, this was last week, you received a notice from me that our free cash has been certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We got word that we had 2.8 million in free cash certified. And I've handed out a chart to you, which just provides sort of a historical graph of our free cash over time, up to the present. You can sort of see the, the history of that over time, including the FY10, which is when we had the significant sort of crash of the economy and the mid-year cuts. And then we've tried to begin to rebuild that. I'm very proud of the work that we did this year in terms of the work that Susan Wright and our financial team did, working with our department heads to try to make sure that we closed our books at the end of the year, of the fiscal year, with a healthy balance of remaining funds. Again, partly with an eye toward replenishing our reserves, which is very important in terms of our capacity to react to emergencies, very important for our bond rating, but also because we had a strategy that we would use some of those turnbacks to pay for our capital plan in 2013. The lion's share of that free cash was 1.145 million in unexpended funds that departments did not spend. We worked very hard at the end of the fiscal year to watch spending, to watch hiring, so that we could, we could return that money to our reserves when it was certified by the state. So what I'm presenting to you tonight is the FY, a plan for capital spending in this fiscal year 2013. And I just want to quickly read through my message to you on that. "The purpose of the capital plan is to quantify the investments in capital assets that are needed on an ongoing basis to support the delivery of services to North Hampton residents, businesses, and visitors. These assets include city buildings, including the North Hampton schools, City Hall, fire station, police station, et cetera, our vehicles and equipment, public works infrastructure, and city property." And I go through in the memo that I provided to you, we did a review of our, of our city's capital planning and debt management policy guidelines. These were developed in 2002. They establish some benchmarks about appropriate levels of debt. So one of the exercises we wanted to do in, in preparing this was to just take sort of a look, a stock of where we are in that regard. And I provided some benchmarks in there for you to study and look at, which will probably be more important as we move into the next five-year plan. This capital plan that I'm putting before you does not depend on any borrowing, so we aren't doing any borrowing. But I thought it was helpful to provide kind of a check-in on where we're doing on benchmarks in terms of, you'll see, we've got benchmarks like our net direct debt not exceeding 10% of assessed valuation. We're currently at 2.1%. That's good. We have a benchmark of our total general fund, general obligation debt service and capital spending not exceeding 10%. We're at 8.3%. Still, still not at that, not at that 10% cutoff. But obviously, that's something we need to keep an eye on. Our general levy-supported general obligation debt service and capital spending will not exceed 5%. You'll see we're at 2.9%. One of the areas that we do have to work on is this issue of our long-term debt schedule and retiring our debt so that at least 50% of the outstanding principal is paid off. You can see from the chart that, that we have work to do to achieve that goal. We're at 28.6% and we're scheduled to achieve 42.9% over the next five fiscal years. All departments submitted to me a five-year capital plan. We asked all the departments to update what their capital needs were in October. The Capital Improvements Planning Committee reviewed all of those projects with a specific focus on what we could try to accomplish in FY13 as well as FY14. As you know, with the passage of the city charter, we'll now have in 2014 a new process for how, or at least a new timeline for the capital improvement process. So in, in February or March, under the charter, I will be, I will be required to present to you a new five-year capital improvement program, which you will have hearings on and vote, and, and, or at least have public hearings on and vote to accept. It's not the actual spending proposals, it's more of a five-year plan. And then we will have to come forward in each fiscal year with actual authorizations to actually carry out that plan. But knowing that if the charter passed, that we'd quickly have to pivot, we wanted them to look at 13 and 14 so that we'd be able to be prepared in that case. The committee reviewed 61 projects with a total value of $42,124,000. They met with each department head about their proposed projects and they discussed possible revenue streams to fund each project. The committee also reviewed all of our outstanding capital projects to first determine if the department was on track to complete their current project load and also determine whether there were funds from older and completed projects that could be reprogrammed. After reviewing the recommendations of the committee, I'm bringing forward to you tonight 18 projects at a cost of $1,661,634 to be funded through the General Fund Cash Capital Program and FY13 Undesignated Fund Balance, or free cash, and by other revenue sources, including receipts reserved, trust funds, and reprogram funds from completed or dormant capital projects. To give you just a quick breakdown of how that funding is allocated, $250,000 is from the FY13 Cash Capital Account. That's an account that we, you, we funded in the FY13 budget. From the free cash certification that I just described to you, $896,105. And again, that's, we, the state refers to it as free cash, but it's, it's technically the Undesignated Fund Balance. $11,894 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund. $210,142 from the Receipt Reserve for Appropriation Sale of Land Fund. And specifically, that is proceeds from the sale of the former fire station on Masonic Street. $74,000 from Water Enterprise Funds, $100,000 from Sewer Enterprise Funds, and then $119,493 from reprogrammed completed capital projects. Those are, again, are projects that were previously authorized but from which there are proceeds left that have not yet been, that are left over from those projects that we now want to reprogram to other capital projects. I want to go through and just quickly cover the, the projects for you. And then I know we have individual orders that you will have to take up in terms of funding them. Under the building inspection, the Building Commissioners Department, we're recommending $22,000 for a building department inspection and emergency response all-wheel-drive vehicle. The building department currently drives about 20,000 miles a year for inspection and department staff use. And they use their personal vehicles to do that for about 60% of those miles. In FY 2012, the department reimbursed staff for about 13,000 miles at a cost of $7,130. Currently, the department has a Currently, the department has a 1997 Ford Explorer that was obtained from the Fire Department in 2010. It has 100,000 miles on it. To maintain our green community designation, we are now prohibited from interdepartmental transfers of older, less fuel-efficient vehicles, and since we can no longer do those transfers, we believe a new vehicle is recommended. An all-wheel-drive vehicle is recommended because inspections are often done at difficult-to-access construction sites, and inspectors also respond to emergencies often in bad weather conditions. The department would purchase a fuel-efficient vehicle that would provide reliable and safe transportation, and we believe would pay for itself in three to five years with a potentially useful life of at least 10 or more years. The second item is the Central Services Department. We're requesting $40,000 for removal of underground oil tanks. As you know, the recently completed ESCO Energy Project resulted in the conversion of our heating systems in multiple city and school buildings from oil to natural gas. Both underground and above-ground oil tanks are required to be removed under state DEP regulations. The committee felt that this should be a priority, given the potential for environmental issues, and therefore they prioritized the tank removal by recommending that in-ground tanks be removed in FY-13 and above-ground in FY-14. So this project will remove empty underground oil tanks at the Florence Fire Station, the Memorial Hall, and at the DPW. The Central Services is also, we're also requesting $17,047 in exterior modifications to City Hall. This project would include roof work at the rear of the building and work to the front landing. The rear roof work would include the installation of gutters and snow guards to protect the back entrance from water runoff and snow. The front landing work would entail replacing the granite step by the front door with a granite landing. This would provide a proper walking surface for people coming in and going out of the building. It can be done using reprogrammed funds from other completed City Hall capital projects. $15,000, we're recommending for ADA access to council chambers and the municipal building. Modifications will be made to the exterior entry of the municipal building at the ground-level entry from the City Hall parking area. These modifications will make the building entry ADA compliant and also provide ADA compliant access to council chambers, something that I know, having served on the council, that we've heard about for many years as being a priority, to provide access to people to these chambers. $50,000, again, to Central Services, is for the Academy of Music Roof Replacement. The asphalt roof at the rear of the building is in need of replacement, and the Academy of Music has $50,000 in Community Preservation Act funding toward the roof project. The entire cost of the roof repair is estimated at $100,000, and the Academy had sought grant funding for the remaining 50, but was unsuccessful. In addition, Central Services has secured a Green Communities Grant for insulation and air sealing work that cannot be done until the roof repairs are completed. The Green Communities Grant is time-sensitive, and therefore doing the roof work now will leverage these additional funds for energy improvements. For the North Hampton Public Schools, we're recommending $100,000 toward their Capital Technology Improvement Plan. The School Department cited technology as their highest priority, and I can say they had requested $300,000 toward that effort. This funding will assist with technology needed to implement a new educator evaluation system for storage upgrades, wireless upgrades, and servers and switches. The technology will also allow for web and Intranet virtual machine upgrades, and the switches will permit upgrades to 10 gigabyte on desktops. All of these improvements will assist the department in meeting park testing levels set by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Also, to the School Department, $44,000 for a grounds maintenance dump truck. This project will replace the 1996 dump truck in daily use by the grounds division of the North Hampton Public Schools. The present truck has 80,000 miles and will not pass inspection in 2013. The truck was also recommended for funding on the FY-12 capital plan, but there were not enough funds available at the time. The vehicle is used for all grounds work and plowing on the six campuses of the North Hampton Public School District, as well as the grounds of the Florence Community Center and the Fiker School. $24,000 for the Central Services, actually strike that for the North Hampton Public Schools, for portable generator and transfer switches. This project will provide for the purchase of a portable generator on a trailer. Having a portable generator for use at various city and school buildings will enhance the city's capacity to respond to emergency situations. It will also allow transfer switches to be installed at either JFK or North Hampton High School to ensure power at these locations if needed for emergency shelters. The generators may also be used at the senior center to provide power for a cooling center during emergencies. The generator will be housed by NPS, but will be available to any city department in an emergency if directed by the mayor. The next item in the School Department is video surveillance system at North Hampton High School. Components for the current video surveillance system at the high school are outdated, and the system as a whole is failing due to diminished capacity and quality. The city has actually retained the security cameras from the old police station, and they can be recycled for use at the high school. The funds will be used for wiring and cables, as well as the installation of a new system manager component to run the system. And finally, $15,000 to the Ryan Road Elementary School Chimney Stack Repairs. The chimney associated with the boiler and hot water system at RK Fin Ryan Road is in need of repair. There are loose bricks that need replacing and/or repointing work to be done as the existing mortar is failing. The chimney repair must be completed in preparation for a new roof installation that has been requested in the FY-14 capital plan. Just going to grab my water. The Fire Department. I am recommending this evening $545,000 for a frontline attack engine for the North Hampton Fire Department. The Fire Department has requested a new apparatus in the capital plan for several years. It has been clear that the apparatus in the department are aging, and its frontline capacity has been diminished. However, funding constraints have postponed this purchase. Standards from the ICMA recommend that a fire apparatus should last 20 years and serve in frontline capacity for five years, and then be transitioned to backup and then reserve status. Currently, Engine 4 and Engine 5, two of NFD's frontline vehicles, are 2,000 models that have been subject to heavy wear for the last 12 years. Each of these units is in poor condition, with the diesel engine failing in Engine 4 and Engine 5 catching fire due to mechanical failure while responding to a structure fire. The city was forced to borrow an engine from the city of Springfield for six months while Engine 4's motor was being rebuilt. Constant repairs have caused a drain on the operations and maintenance budget. It is time to invest in a major new apparatus to retire Engine 5, and funding is proposed from three sources. From free cash, $299,358. Reprogram funds of $35,500, which were appropriated in the FY-11 capital plan for an EMS response vehicle. And lastly, the Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Sale of Land Account, $210,142. Again, as I mentioned, those are funds from the proceeds of, the sale proceeds of the former fire station on Masonic Street, which have been held in a reserve account. And so the next item for the Fire Department is $65,000. This is for an ambulance replacement. The rotation plan for replacement of ambulance units is designed to ensure reliability and service quality by purchasing a new unit every two years. This allows for three primary units and one backup unit. The ambulance will cost $235,000 and will be financed by a lease in arrears. This $65,000 will be used for the down payment, and then three annual lease payments will be built into the annual ambulance, other-than-ordinary-maintenance account budget. To the Police Department. $67,500 to replace administrator vehicles. This project will provide for replacement of two vehicles for administrators, replacing vehicles from 2005 and 2006 that will be cycled down to lower-use-backup status. This is part of the annual rotation schedule that normally provides for one administrative vehicle per year. However, since no funding was appropriated in FY-12, two vehicles are being recommended in FY-13. And $10,000 is recommended for the Police Department to replace pistols. This project was submitted by the police chief after the capital planning process was complete. The tritium sights and main slide springs on the NPD's 17-year-old Glock pistols need replacement as they at the end of their useful life. The cost of making these updates would be approximately $11,000. However, with trade-in value on 83 pistols at approximately $250 per gun, the department will be able, with $10,000 of capital funding, to purchase new Glock pistols for the entire force. The Department of Public Works. We're recommending $474,000 in vehicle purchases. The DPW has a replacement schedule for its equipment fleet based on mileage, hours, and/or the age of the vehicles. The decision to replace a vehicle versus repair is normally made when the cost to repair and maintain a vehicle begins to exceed the operating cost of a new vehicle. These proposed vehicles represent only a small portion of the DPW's vehicle replacement needs. The following equipment is recommended for replacement. $300,000 from free cash and reprogram funds to replace a 1998 10-wheel dump truck. $74,000 from Water Enterprise Funds for a Ford 550 4x4 pickup, and $100,000 from Sewer Enterprise Funds for a Ford 555 utility vans. $65,000 is, we're asking for the DPW for the mechanics area slab repair in the DPW barn. As you know, repairs to the DPW barn became necessary in the spring of 2012 when a section of the main barn's floor failed. Further investigation of this problem led to a reprogramming by this council of approximately $50,000 from the former Salt Shed Acquisition Account to make repairs to the barn floor, which included filling the trenches with granular fill and making structural repairs. There is still work necessary to mitigate the mold and repair the floor in the mechanics bay. Estimated engineering costs are $10,000, and construction costs are estimated to be $55,000 to $65,000, for a total of $75,000. There is approximately $10,000 remaining from the first repair, and therefore $65,000 is being recommended to complete the project to extend the life of the DPW barn. $22,000 is being recommended for the Spring Grove Cemetery Roof Repair. The slate roof at the Spring Grove Cemetery Building is in need of repair because the nails holding the shingles are rusting. Instead of fixing the slate, the roof will be replaced with a 50-year shingle. In addition, plywood underneath the roof will be replaced when necessary. Also, the soffits and fascia were damaged during the October 2011 snowstorm, and the building currently has a tarp over it due to leaks. Money was appropriated in FY-08, but some of that was used to complete the new pole barn at the same facility. Therefore, it is proposed that remaining funds from the FY-2008 Spring Grove Roof Repairs, $6,288.69, be used in conjunction with funds left over from another DPW roof project from FY-2008, $3,817, be used to fund approximately half the cost. The remainder will come from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund. And finally, $73,587 to the Water Street Bridge Repair. The fiscal year 2009 capital improvement plan provided $75,000, of which $56,413 remains, for this project and design work was completed. The project was bid out, and bids came back twice the engineering estimate, and the project was put on hold pending more funds. A Massachusetts Highway Division inspection revealed severe scouring and undermining of the bridge abutment. To complete the project, another appropriation is necessary, and that's what these funds would be used, to complete those bridge repairs. I want to thank the department heads and all the members of the CIP Committee for their hard work and constructive input. City Council Finance Chair David Murphy, served as chair of the committee and your council's representative. My mayoral appointments to the committee, William Grinnell, Rob Osberg, and Mark Jordan. The School Department's Representative, Mark McLaughlin. The School Committee Representative, Ed Zuhowski. Planning Board Representative, Mark Sullivan. And ex-officio staff representatives, Joyce Karpinski, our city auditor, and Finance Director, Susan Wright. I'd like to thank you in advance for your consideration of my FY-13 capital improvement plan. As I said at the outset, I will submit an updated five-year capital improvement program to City Council early next year in accordance with Section 7.5 of the new charter, including support for additional projects in FY-2014. It is my goal to continue to provide funds that support our capital assets and provide the necessary facilities and equipment to carry out the important work of our departments. So that is my capital plan submission, and I know we've also submitted a number of financial orders that break down all the monies and transfers that I've discussed, and I'm happy to answer questions, or as you go through them, answer questions about projects.
I'm wondering if you would consider, we have a poll petition scheduled for 8 o'clock, and if we could, given the fact that this promises to be an exhaustive conversation, that I'd ask that we recess finance briefly to have the poll petition and go back into session.
Any objection from Finance to move with the poll petition and then come back to these one at a time?
I thought he'd like to stay in here.
I think the Representatives of National Grid want to sit through, you'd learn a lot about city finance, I know. It's an unparalleled opportunity for you, but we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to let you do your poll petition.
I don't want to tax Verizon's.
No, no, no. So any objections to returning to the main meeting and doing the poll petition? Is that all right with everyone?
All right. We are convening a poll petition for, a petition for joint poll location on, it's 9 ADVEB Florence Street, and we'll hear first from the petitioners.
Yes, my name's Al Basset, I'm with Verizon. I'm here with Lisa Jazinski from Mass Electric, and we have a petition before you this evening for one poll on the westerly side of Florence Street. And that, the need for this poll is to provide support to a poll that's adjacent to it on the easterly side. Poll on the easterly side is starting to lean towards the private property side of the street. There's a slight corner on that, on that poll line, so we need to support that poll. So we're going to propose to place a poll on the west side, run a guy wire across the street, you know, tie into that leaning poll, straighten it out, and secure it, and make it safe for everybody. So that's essentially what the nature of the petition is tonight. It's pretty straightforward, but certainly if you have any questions.
Counselor Ticey.
This is right in front of the park, right?
You know, it's not quite right in front. It's, it's right on the corner of the park property, and there's property owned by the power company. So it's right, it's right on that corner, so it's not quite in front of the park.
Is it Mass Electric or National Grid?
That is, they are essentially the same company, okay? And maybe Lisa would want to address that.
And they still exist, but we.
It really does.
We were asked by National Grid to use the Mass Electric name for purposes of all petitions. So they really are the same, the same company, yeah.
I only ask questions because I've never, I've always seen it come before us as National Grid.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mass Electric, that's good.
Any other questions?
I just, I've visited the site.
Is there anyone else here from the public who wishes to speak to this petition? Accept a motion to close the hearing?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sound approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, same to you.
Say something else?
No, I said, is this the first time in this format?
This is, yeah, no, this is the third time. We're still working out the bugs. We'll now move back into recess for Finance.
Great, thank you. So what I would propose to move forward on this in Finance, everybody has their capital plan, I think in their packet, so they've got that, and what I'd like to do is go through each of the orders, and if you have any questions, the mayor's here to answer them, and I'm prepared to give you the page reference for each of the items, so if you want to be able to look at it in the capital plan and then ask questions of the mayor, we can step through it in a logical, logical process.
I have one question on the, it's actually a Scribner's thing. The total for the requested amounts you said was 42 million, although it's listed here online at least at 41,224,000.
I must, I, I have missed.
Yeah, see, it's 41,224,100, and you said 42. Just a million dollars, I wouldn't worry about it. Fact is, they're not getting.
I'm sure someone's already thought of another million-dollar project while we're
I'm sure someone's already thought of another million-dollar projects while we're not sitting here tonight. Counselor Owen Daniels.
I just have a general question for the mayor or the finance director. You're talking about your, your sort of guidelines regarding debt management. Two questions. One, by the way, except for coming up close to the cap on operating general obligations, I'm curious about the, everything else looks good, and I'm actually curious about the, how negative the outstanding principle being less than 50% from retirement, from retirement within 10 years, how bad that is, and especially in light of relatively low financing costs these days. And I'm curious, maybe, if it's time to redraft your policy guidelines. I mean, they're 10 years old, and I'm wondering if you have that on the agenda. I'm particularly interested in whether that has changed, whether, first of all, whether the rating agencies are looking at other things, given the concern over municipal debt that's been, that's been echoing around Wall Street in the last year, and also whether the low cost of financing might have altered that, that guideline.
I think that's a great point you make, and one of our goals is to, to, to look at that, to look, pull those financial goals back out and, and probably try to go through them again. I suspect we were in a much higher interest rate environment when they were affirmed in 2002, and, and we, that's also an issue we can take up with our bond counsel in terms of, we'll, we'll be having future rating calls, and we can ask our bond counsel in advance about that question as we look at those. But I think you're right, we are, it may be an outmoded metrics, that we, metric that we need to take a look at, and we'll certainly do that.
Great, thank you.
Definitely.
I also want to thank you for the, the depth of this, of this presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Dwyer.
As the chair, as also the chair of the CIP Committee, that, how does this reconcile with your request and your recommendations?
Well, I've been chairing capital improvements for some time, and there are many more requests from department heads than we've had the money to fund for as long as I can remember. I mean, there's years we didn't even meet because we had so little money that it would have been futile. So we did do both FY '13, which we're in now, and FY '14. So when the mayor returns, under the terms of the new charter, to recommend 14 items, some of those things, we, all of those things we've already dealt with and recommended to the mayor. The mayor has selected from the things we recommended what he felt capable of funding at this point in time. So if you have any questions, having actually been there and talked to the department heads, I could possibly shed some light as well, but what's coming forward now are the things that can get funded this fiscal year, and then in '14, in March or so when the mayor comes back, there'll be more items that we recommended at that point that will come before you. But I'm happy to tell you what I know about each of these based on actually having talked to the department heads directly. And I also want to thank the members of the Capital Improvements Committee. It's, it's a great committee of local citizens and representatives of departments, and myself representing the council, and it works very well. Some of the people have been around long enough to really get the hang of, it's hard to understand municipal finance if you come from a, a regular business finance background, so they're getting the hang of it, and they're very thoughtful, and they work very hard. And we meet basically weekly until we get our jobs done, so it's a very intense period of work. And we, we meet once a year based on when the financial plan is due, but we meet a lot in a very short period of time. So for folks at home, this is finance, all of the counselors will ask questions at this point to discuss these issues. The only counselors that will be voting will be the members of finance, and that is only to recommend or not to the full council. Then these will come back under financial orders later in the full council meeting where everyone will vote on it. So in finance, we only vote to recommend. So what I'm going to do is read the first of these orders, and then we'll, if someone will move them, we can ask the questions about them, we'll go through them one at a time. So the first one, capital projects to be appropriated from the general fund FY '13 cash capital account. This is a total of $250,000. This is the building inspections vehicle for $22,000, central services removal of oil tanks for $40,000, central services ADA access to the municipal building and council chambers for $15,000, North Hampton Public Schools grounds maintenance dump truck for $44,000, North Hampton Public Schools transfer switches and portable generator for $24,000, video surveillance system, very timely, at the North Hampton High School, 12-5, Ryan Road school chimney repair for $15,000, two police administrative vehicles for $67,500, and then the replacement of all the police pistols for $10,000, for a total of $250,000. Do I have a motion to recommend? To recommend. Second?
Second.
Do we have a second from a finance member?
Second.
Second, all right. Discussion on any of these items?
Yep. Central Services, underground fuel tanks. I asked that question during the ESCO, and they said, yeah, they would have to remove. I thought the ESCO was handling this.
The ESCO is strictly about doing upgrades to, to energy-related things, so.
And I asked about the oil tanks at the time, and they said they'd be removed, and now I see it here where we're going to fund it. I'm just kind of curious, I've never been really all that comfortable with the ESCO, how they are going to tell us whether or not we've saved that money. It seemed to, to morph and change, but I was under the impression that the removal of the underground oil tanks was all part of the $6.5 million.
That's actually not my recollection of, of that process, and I was part of that process as well, a member of your finance committee, and I can certainly research that question for you, but I'm, I'm fairly certain it wasn't, but again, it's, it's one of the issues that Central Services needs to take care of, so, but I can certainly research that between now and the next meeting.
Counselor Byrd?
Yes, I also would like to recognize, Susan Wright, please.
So move? Second.
She's recognized, yes.
I think, isn't we agreed that both the mayors would be recognized?
Susan, I know I've called you several times this week going over some of the concerns that I've had. Page 10, the Board of Public Works, and we talked about possibly, because I saw on the total of $300,000, I'm just going on to that one because it includes the, the dump truck, there is a shortage of 13 cents, if you calculate that, that is not a right total. It does not come up to that.
Counselor Byrd, that, that's not in the order I don't think we're talking about.
No, but I wanted to check that out, counselor.
Yeah, it, it comes to us as amended when we add to it.
I'm asking her a question, counselor.
Please carry on.
So after our phone calls, I gave Mary Madura two amended orders. One was the 13 cents, and the other one was the 31 cents. So both of those orders have been amended, and I thank you for catching that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I also would like to know the years of the pickup trucks, the pickup and the utility van.
Oh, what year that they're replacing?
Yes, yes.
We'll have to do a quick, we'll have to do some research quickly for.
It doesn't say.
Yeah.
Is this, is this on the motion?
No.
These are actually, these are items that we haven't quite come to yet, so if we can wait till those come up, then we can try, well, actually, yeah, there's a different dump truck that's under discussion now, but we'll try to take a quick look and.
At the moment, we're talking about the school department dump truck.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
So to the order at hand and on the floor.
Yes, sir. The, of course, I'm pretty on board with all of these. I have, I can't even think why we wouldn't replace the building inspector's car. I've actually ridden it, but the grounds maintenance dump truck is 96, 1996? I think, yeah. Okay, and I would like, if you could just check into that oil, the oil tanks for me.
Most certainly.
See what you come up with.
I know the, the building inspector's comment about his vehicle was, they don't drive this vehicle anywhere they're not comfortable walking back from.
It's really.
That was his comment in the meeting, they don't want to drive it anywhere that they can't walk back from.
It is off.
It's ready to be replaced.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions on the free cash capital account? And all in favor of a positive recommendation? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. So we'll go to our next order. And this one totals $353,587. This is coming from the undesignated fund balance, otherwise known as free cash, okay? Now, this one is central services, the roof of the Academy of Music for $50,000, North Hampton Public Schools capital technology improvement plan for $100,000, fire department ambulance lease and arrears down payment of $65,000, the DPW's mechanic area slab repairs for $65,000, and the DPW repairs to the Water Street Bridge for $73,587. Again, the total is $353,587. Do I have a motion for a positive recommendation?
No.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on any of these items? Counselor Daniels.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you said that the, there's a Green Communities grant for, that we're leveraging regarding the Academy of Music?
That's correct.
Do you know, do you have any idea how much that is? Is it 10,000 or?
We'll just, we'll, we'll get that for you. We tried to best to provide as much detail, but obviously.
And, and they, they were going for, I believe, I remember, they were going for a grant that they just didn't get.
They did, they applied to the Mass Cultural Council, and it, and it didn't come through, but they still, it's kind of a, they want to do this air sealing, which they have the funding for.
I don't know the amount of the Green Communities grant, but it is for insulation and air sealing.
It's actually 100.
The whole, the bid for the roof was 100, and they omitted 50.
Okay, so we can, we can check that number for you, but I'm assuming it's in the range of, you know, 50 to 60,000, but we can check.
Five figures?
Yeah, we'll, we'll check that number for you.
And when is it, it expires?
Exactly, I believe we're supposed to expend the funds by the spring, by, you know, before the close of the fiscal year, so, and again, they, they can't really, the way they want to get to the air sealing is when they're doing the roof repair. And the roof repair, obviously, is something we've noted about for a while. We want to make sure we secure that, that roof.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment on the slab repair, I mean, just toward the DPW facility that was built in the 1880s, I believe? And so that, that whole area had such, had a void, and apparently there was a, one of the dump trucks, yeah, collapsed through. We were lucky that it didn't actually do much more significant damage to the vehicle at all, so it's clear that that was a real safety, safety issue there, not only for vehicles, but for anybody working in that area. So I fully support that.
So, oh, Counselor.
Could have been a real disaster had somebody been working under that vehicle at the time it went through the slab, and that is a part where they're working on vehicles all the time, so I'd look at it as a top priority.
So any other questions on this order in finance? And I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our next order is that $17,046.97 be appropriated to fund city hall exterior modifications, including roof, front step repair, to meet that obligation. Reprogramming funds remaining from the following completed projects, $6,058.37 from the upgrading of the hearing room, $9,655.58 from the city hall exterior upgrades, and $1,333.2 from the city hall curbing. Do I have a? Move to recommend?
Second.
All right, any questions on this order? Counselor Tacey.
Thank God, I've been squawking about this whole mess for years, especially the granite step coming in the front. How many times have we mortared in, in the curbing as you drive in? Thank you.
And we did, we did look at trying to, to make that door ADA accessible, but we found that it was going to be fairly cost, an expensive project because it would require a whole modification to that wall. So what we were going, so what will happen is, the actual ADA entrance will be at the main entrance to the building, and we're going to modify that hallway and the door system so that people who want to access the chambers will be able to do that on a city council night, and also have access to the building if they want to go pay their, you know, water bill, or if they want to get to the school department. So rather than trying to do both doors, it was a clearer way to do it so that we could provide access to the whole building.
When we do this, Social Services, Veterans Affairs, and Commission on Disabilities, which Mary and LeBarge, they come here and they speak about their difficulty in getting in here, so this is a very well welcomed, I think, thank you very much.
Counselor Byrd?
Yes, and I want to thank this for happening because there has been, and it has been very, very vocal with the Committee on Disabilities, of the difficulties that we have with people with, that are in wheelchairs trying to access here into council chambers to attend a meeting, so, thank you.
Counselor Dwyer.
On the same issue, is, would that, all these doors then be power open and?
We're, we're working on a plan to do that. What we may end up doing is actually, in the case of that door, removing that door and, and just creating basically a hallway that will be accessible, and having a door to the, to the other, on the other side of that little hallway, possibly even removing that door, but having either a power assist door there, or, or just removing the door altogether.
Does that trigger added expenses for security to have?
No, we believe our in-house staff, we've looked at probably, because obviously, when we have these meetings at night, we try to keep the rest of the building separated from the chambers. They believe they can construct a, a wall that will provide, that will still provide some of that separation, particularly to the school department and other parts of the building after hours for meetings. So Mr. Pomerantz, we actually came over and scoped it out, and he believes this is the most cost-effective way to do it, using in-house staff, and obviously hiring someone professional to do the, because they're going to have to have an opener for both the exterior door as well as the, the next door in the air, the, whatever that foyer is called, where we try to keep the heat and the cold from escaping, the airlock.
Well, it's, it's.
Decon.
It's worth noting that ADA law actually mandates that the main entrance be the entrance where accessibility be applied, so it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's very appropriate to have it as the main entrance. It's a dignity feature, and whenever possible, so I think that's to the better, actually.
And actually, the majority of the visitors to this building probably use the main entrance.
They don't come here.
Well, they come here every other Thursday.
No, I take your point.
Yeah, actually, every Thursday.
So any other questions in finance on this particular order? And I'll call for a vote, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move on to the next order. And this order is that $545,000 be appropriated for the purchase and equipment of a frontline attack fire engine for the fire department, and to meet that obligation, appropriate the following funds, $299,358 from the FY '13 general fund, undesignated fund balance or free cash, and $210,142 from receipt reserves for appropriation, the sale of land fund, that would have been the old fire station, and reprogram $35,500 from an account originally allocated in FY '11 capital plan for the purchase of an EMS emergency response vehicle. They would be used towards the purchase of this fire engine. Do I have a? Simple motion.
No.
All right, questions on this one?
We never, yeah, we never did purchase that EMS vehicle, is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that, that EMS vehicle was slated for potential purchase, and I made the decision to put that on hold because we had other priority vehicles that needed replacement in the department.
Thank you.
Counselor Byrd?
So with the mayor, the sale, that's the old fire station.
That's correct.
Which is the sale of the land.
That's correct. And under state law, for sale of land like that, you're allowed. And under state law, for sale of land like that, you're allowed, you're only allowed to use those proceeds on a sort of a capital project that would require kind of a borrowing that would be equal to, I think, is it five years or 10 years? I forgot. Essentially, we can't just take that money and put it into operating expenses. You have to use those proceeds for a capital expense. And we, and I felt that the, this funds have been sitting there, and it just seemed like the symmetry of, it was proceeds from the sale of the fire station, here we have a major capital need in the fire department, that we would reallocate those funds toward that purchase.
I can recall, I remember when they needed this several, several years ago, and I remember them talking about engine four and five, and in the bad additions that they were into, so I'm very happy to see this.
And just to clarify, I'm the finance director, so it would have to be used for some, a capital item that would require a borrowing of five years or more, which a $550,000, you know, vehicle would certainly qualify as that type of capital expense.
So they're going to be retiring engine fives, correct?
Well, the plan is, yeah, well, they, we rebuilt the engine, rebuilt the other engine that failed, so they felt like of the two, this was the one that really needed replacement. And it will, will, most likely, will be put into some kind of a reserve status, and then they'll make a decision about it. And again, this is a, this is one of those big-ticket items that we've put off for many years. I've certainly heard about it in my conversations in collective bargaining and with members who work there, it's a concern. And obviously, you know, we want to make sure that our, these are our frontline engines, we want to make sure that we have equipment. The, we have an opportunity, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring it forward right now in FY13, there's a state bid that we believe we are going to be able to still get in on for FY13, that's going to, and so I actually, when I put forth this order, I simultaneously indicated to this state bid that I wanted to reserve a spot for us to be able to purchase it in FY13, so we can basically get an FY13 price, because that's all going to be redone after January 1st. So we're hoping to be able to purchase this vehicle on that bid.
Let me go to Councilor Dwight, and then we'll go back to Councilor LeBarge.
In the past, as I recall, Smith College has donated money for the purchase or towards the purchase of fire apparatus. Do we know if they're so inclined for any future or current purchases?
I did not make a request regarding this specific vehicle. Again, this was something that was a little bit fluid as we put the capital plan together. I do have conversations with Smith College on a regular basis, and obviously, they have provided funding for other city needs. I do intend to have a conversation about, about possible funding going forward with Smith College, although given the transition in leadership right now that's occurring, the conversations that I started with the former president, really, I'll have to, I'll have to take up again with the new president. So the short answer is no, but I do, this is an issue that I want to pursue with them, not particularly on a, maybe an item-by-item basis, but a more global conversation around, around some of the possible support for city services.
It does make sense in that, particularly for emergency response systems, that large events would be more likely to occur on their campus, that we have to actually make equipment purchases with an eye towards accommodating a crisis on campus. So the partnership that they would be inclined to favor us with, of course, would be gratefully received.
Councilor LeBarge, you still have a question?
No, I'm fine, you answered it, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Tacey?
I got a couple of, just, Smith College was on my list to ask, but, thank you, that's perfect. But floor space for the old vehicle, do we actually have floor space for that old vehicle if we, if we replace it? And my second question at the same would be, what would be the need for us to keep it? Would we have a need for that?
Again, I, and that's, I can check, I can check with Dan Ruth here and with the chief on that, and report back to you on that. I may have, they may in fact want to surplus the vehicle, but I can check on that. They have, they have another older pumper truck, I know, and in terms of floor space there and at the Florence Station, I'd need to check on whether or not they could in fact keep an, keep an extra engine like that. It may be in fact that they want to just retire it, but I can find out for sure what that.
I just have visions of it sitting beside of the other one on Locust Street.
Yeah. No, we, no, we wouldn't want that to happen, I agree. And if there's potential value in it for another department, for example, we may want to try to capture that. But I can try to get an answer for you about that question for your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this order from anyone? All right, and I'll ask for a vote on this, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Vote. Our next order comes to it, and we want to move it as amended, as Councilor LeBarge astutely noted, it's been amended by 13 cents. So this would be, on the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz, a total of $300,013.13 be appropriated for the purchase of equipping a dump truck for DPW to meet that obligation; $243,160 from the FY13 general fund, undesignated fund balance; and the reprogramming of $40,362 from the account for capital vehicle purchases; and $16,477.90 from DPW capital vehicles purchases. So.
Recommend?
Second?
Second.
Questions on this one?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilor LeBarge for finding that scrivener's error. We use all kinds of Excel spreadsheets, and this was a case where one of those spreadsheets had a cell that was programmed to round up, and so the 13 cents got lost when we transferred it to the order.
I carved $1 million, she carved 13 cents.
I know.
There was, the ghost of Chris Miles is still in the room.
Exactly.
Attention to detail.
Right, keep the books clean.
I have one question, I can't find it in the papers here. The, and this is Department of Public Works, $474,000 vehicle purchase, I know I might be a little off-base here. I'm looking for this Ford 550 that I have not seen us go through yet, and I'm still looking ahead, and I don't see it here.
Actually, those were, and we included those in our capital plan, but then we actually realized afterwards, because those were being paid for with water and sewer funds, and they were actually part of the 13 budget, they were actually in the 13 budget, like as line item purchases. So we actually, the council actually voted those purchases in the last budget year, and so they actually sort of were coming, they submitted them as capital purchases for FY13, they got put on the plan, but because they had already been, I'll let the finance director explain.
Right. So the $100,000 that's coming out of sewer enterprise funds for a vehicle, they have $79,728.55 in encumbered from prior year vehicle funds, and then they had $35,000 in their FY13, other than ordinary maintenance budget for capital, for equipment. So together, those two accounts, right now, what they have, that you've already appropriated is $140,748. So they have the $100,000 already appropriated by this body to do that. The $74,000 for the water enterprise fund, they have encumbered from prior years vehicle purchases, $7,137.67. And as the mayor said, in your, in their FY13 capital plan, in their OOM, you know how there's PSOM and then OOM? They asked for $35,000, so together, they have $42,137. So in talking with Director Huntley, he said they're going to wait until FY14, they'll put in another $35,000 to get up to the 74, and then they'll order the vehicle. So they will not be ordering the vehicle. So we have basically agreed that the vehicle is necessary, but they have to wait until the funds, that they are able to put all the funds. So I did want to check, because typically, I was a little confused myself as to why there weren't separate orders for the enterprise funds, but in reviewing this and going over it with the auditor, and looking back at their encumbered funds and their OOM, that they encumbered it all put together, so we are, we are certain that they have enough for the sewer, sewer truck purchase, and that they're going to need to wait on the water truck.
And my, what brought it to my attention, it's a Ford 550, and it says four-by-four pickup. It'll be a very big pickup. So it must be a dump truck, is that correct?
That's, I'm quoting their capital plan, but I will, the one thing is, on those two, they didn't put the year that the vehicle was replacing, so I will find that out.
Okay.
More specifically, at the next meeting, you'll have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor LeBarge, you have a question?
Yes. Susan, thank you, because when I had called you again, I had great concerns, because I was confused myself about the water and sewer, and how come it was that way?
You know, as you know, you do the police, you do three police cruisers every year as part of the regular budget, the OOM, so these are basically done kind of the same way. So you are, so be assured that they can't spend any money unless you appropriate it, whether it's general fund or enterprise. You still need to appropriate.
Thank you.
Do you want to be confused, the three cruisers, that's the general fund or from parking?
Fund three cruisers. We fund them in the OOM and the police budget, but whether those are captured on indirect or not, I'll have to.
Okay.
I'll, I can look.
Because I know we're not buying six cruisers every year.
No, no, no.
Okay, so it must be, so it must be all out of that.
It must be in the indirect, but I, I'll have to look at that worksheet to tell you whether that's one of the things.
Okay, thank you.
And I do just want to check one of the numbers here that we're reprogramming. I think we got one, too many digits in this, when I read it the first time. $40,362, and it says .223. What is the real number?
One of the clues has to go.
We got, it's modified up behind where it says, and then the written one, it's, you know, .223.
Discover another 10th cent.
Yeah.
That was just our cash.
Any more questions on this order? Then, as amended by 13 cents, I'll ask for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this one is also amended, I believe, by 31 cents. That $22,000 be appropriated for the Spring Grove Cemetery roof repairs, and to meet the obligation, appropriate $11,894.31 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund, and reprogram $6,288.69 from the account for Spring Grove roof repairs, and $3,817 from the account for DPW roof repairs.
Recommend, second.
Questions on this one, anyone?
Absolutely, the best thing in the world is to replace those slate roofs. I had, I've done a lot of roofing over the years, and I had perennial customers, every year, slates, rotten nails, this is perfect. This is cost-effectiveness right here.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote. And this is the one that makes the auditors happy, that we appropriate $500,000 from the FY13 general fund, undesignated fund balance or free cash, to the capital stabilization fund. All right, any questions on this one?
I just, if I could speak to this one, because this isn't actually part of the capital plan, this is a separate order, and, and so, again, when we, part of our strategy, when we were attempting to make sure we finished the year, was so that we could replenish our reserves by holding, by having as much term backs as we could. And so what we're recommending is that we take, so the 2.834914 that we have in certified free cash, we're recommending 896 of it go to the capital plan that you've just approved parts of, and then 500 of it, we want to move to capital stabilization. So what that will leave us with at the end of the day, is we will then have, our stabilization fund will have $690,481. Our capital stabilization fund will have $505,199.51, and that will still leave us with 1.438,809 in free cash or the undesignated fund balance. So we believe by allocating the funds this way, putting some into capital stabilization, again, as the chair mentioned, not only the auditors, but the bond rating agencies in terms of looking at, at our balances, this will, this will leave us with about, about 1.5% of our operating budget in reserves, which again, is still relatively modest, given the size of our size and when we look at comparable communities, but it's a, it's putting us on an upward trend in terms of rebuilding our reserves. So that's the goal of asking you to take some of that free cash and moving it into capital stabilization. And again, you're using capital, some capital stabilization for this year's capital plan and with an eye towards FY14.
Councilor Tacey?
Do we still have a directive not to spend anything above a certain amount to department heads that we had? Is that still, is that still in force?
I currently have a $250. I'm reviewing all purchases over $250.
And that's worked out pretty well for us?
You know, it's, I believe that it's, it's allowed me to be able to more closely monitor spending. It's obviously, you know, it's, it's difficult to know what spending would have occurred if we didn't have the 250, that, that limit, but, you know, departments have worked with me to provide me information about, about expenses like that, and, you know, and so we're just making sure, particularly now that we are turning the corner on another fiscal year, and getting ready to prepare next year's budget, that we're really being cost-conscious in terms of how we're spending resources.
So it is still in place?
It is, yes. We did at the beginning of the fiscal year, we raised it up to 1,000 for a while, and saw how that played out, and then I returned it back to the 250 level, because I wanted to, I just felt I needed to see more detail in terms of spending requests.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And just the last, to go back a little bit, the sale of land that we did, that's capital. Is the land by the Department of Revenue, do they say that's capital? We had the sale of land here, where, is it the DOR that says that's capital, we have to use it for capital?
State, there are state regulations in terms of, it's DOR regulations, exactly, as to how that funding could be used.
So even if it's just raw land, or where there's got a building on it, doesn't make any difference?
That's the, that's our, oh, she's got.
Which is a little confusing.
I can read you the exact.
And you're referring to the sale of the fire station?
Yeah, yeah.
For capital?
Yeah, so it's governed by Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 63. These funds can be used for any purpose that the city could incur debt for a period of five years or more, and so that's sort of the guidelines that we received from DOR and the auditor, and we did check with both of them on that. So again, anything that could be used for capital, so obviously, you can't use it for general fund, general operating expenses. And I think, in looking back at some of the records, when this sale was done, it was put into this receipt reserved account, and I think the idea was to hold it there for some future capital purchase. I don't know what that would have been.
Okay.
So, but we feel that it's sitting there, it's available, and we have this major capital need in the fire department.
Okay, I only ask, I know we had sold certain things, and then we did work at different schools for different things, paving and things such as that, it was all capital expense, it falls into the same category.
I believe if it's something, again, you can, that would typically require a, you know, I think the idea is that a five-year borrowing would be a larger kind of a capital expense. I don't think that necessarily you would want, you could use it for like a normal maintenance or supplies or things like that. I think they're trying to, I guess, recognize that, you know, if the city were to purchase a building or land, that that would be a major capital expense, and so that's why they dictate how you can use the proceeds.
Okay, because I know we had spent 125,000 bucks or something to the Jackson Street School for some paving or something, and it came from a cap, a sale of some capital something or other, that's why I asked.
We can research what that was from.
Yeah.
You know, that would have. You know, that would have, I'd have to look back, I mean, that would have required an appropriation from the receipt reserved fund, so I'd have to look back to see, in fact, if what, if that actually was from land sale, or what that was from, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
I want to thank the mayor again. This I see as mostly a continuation from your budget, which is, I don't want to categorize you too unfavorably, but it's penurious, it's conservative, you know, the capital plan that doesn't involve any borrowing is very aggressive, as far as the management of our, of taxpayer dollars and our future obligations. So I think, you know, you're really doing a lot of work to put the city's finances in order, and to keep us on a sustainable path, and I really want to thank you for that. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I should say, I just would close with, you know, what you don't see on this, on this request, and is that we do have a fairly significant capital project challenge ahead of us, I'll describe it that way, and that is the DPW facility, which Counselor Carney referred to earlier. We had a committee in two thousand and nine, a building committee that Mayor Higgins appointed, that has been studying that, and had come forward with a proposal. I was unable to fund that proposal, given the scope and size of it, so we've actually, I've actually expanded the committee, I've appointed, it was a six-person committee, I've actually expanded it with six more members, including two of your colleagues, Counselor Tacy and Counselor Maureen Carney, yes, which is why you were touring the facility. I've also put two citizens on the committee that weren't previously on the committee, and I've also added a rank-and-file member of the DPW as well. And I've actually sort of given them a charge of, take a look at the work that's been done on that facility to date, and I've sort of showed them some of our financial situation, and sort of challenged them to try to figure out, can we come up with a plan of action for how we can begin to address the needs at that facility? And I think we all know, I know you just toured it, we have some serious, you know, working condition issues for particularly the folks working in the maintenance barn that we have to figure out how to address. We can't, unfortunately, we can't take on the plan that people spent time working on, because the scope of it relative to our capacity right now, just are not in alignment. So we, that's, I just want to give you that heads up, that that is one of our sort of remaining big capital issues, that we're going to have to figure out a way to address. Obviously, we've put a concrete Band-Aid on some of it, with some of the monies that you're appropriating, but that is going to be one of our big challenges, is how do we figure out a way to improve and upgrade that facility? So that's kind of a preview of what we may talk about in the FY14 process.
So we still need to vote on this five hundred thousand dollar order? Any other questions on it at this point?
Nope.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And then just a reminder, you know, we're doing the thirteen capital plan halfway through the year, after the budget's established, but as we transition to the new charter in the spring, we'll be doing the fourteen capital plan well before we vote on the fourteen budget, and it will be that way for the remainder of time. Any other?
Till the end of the world.
Which is, or until we amend the charter again, we took some odd years.
Would I just ask, will, as we move into the capital items in the regular meeting, will you require, do you, have you, we'll obviously be coming back to you with other questions, but will you have other questions about the capital plan during the regular meeting? Okay, no, I have other issues I'm staying for, but I just wanted to make sure, so.
So do we have any new business? And hearing none, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're back on track. So there's, we're up to the minutes, accepting the minutes for Committee on Cultural and Recreation Services for June fourth and September tenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, sorry, Counselor Sprecher? We do have, we have a presentation, and then after the presentation, maybe you might want to consider moving up in the agenda, what seems to be what a lot of people are waiting for, the discussion about the tabled fountain, but, with your indulgence, but right now, we have, Marissa Hebbel is here, and Karen, are you going to speak, Karen? Karen just stands behind people, and it's...
She's got a lot of information.
...presentation from the Northampton Prevention Coalition. There was a recent cafe meeting at the high school, where it was so well-attended, that they had to order out for extra pizza, and cut the Doritos in half, which is why I'm...
Still bitter?
And that's why I'm not bitter. Blood sugar was plummeting there, but the fact is, the presentation was very well-received, and clearly there is a very keen interest in the community, and Counselor Labarge and I requested that an abbreviated presentation would be appropriate for the council to see.
I'll make it super abbreviated for that finance committee presentation. So again, I'm Marissa Hebbel, from Northampton Prevention Coalition, I'm also a resident of Northampton. So I am here to talk, I'll talk quickly about the coalition, but mostly I'm here to tell you about the town hall meeting event, which was great. So briefly, the, and I've probably said all this here before, but the coalition is funded by a federal drug-free communities grant. The goal of our grant is to reduce substance use amongst youth in Northampton, but we also know that substance use doesn't exist in a vacuum for teens, and our teens' lives are full and multifaceted, so we really look at it that we're working to create a community where the healthy choice is the easy choice. And I'll probably say that every time I talk to a city council, because that really is how we're working. And what that means is that youth have lots of opportunity for healthy and constructive activities, youth feel appreciated and recognized for their efforts, and not just our high-achieving youth. It's difficult for youth to obtain drugs and alcohol in that kind of community, families are supported, there's a strong connection between schools and families, we have a big task list here, and we're supporting parents in what is probably the most important and meaningful job of their lives. So, that's really the nutshell version of what we're doing. We have lots of projects that are currently in action, and I'm here to talk to you about the town hall meeting. This event was funded by a small federal grant, specifically for town hall meetings. Lots of coalitions in the area are doing similar town hall meetings in different ways, and we thought it would be particularly helpful and useful for Northampton parents to hear about the teen brain, and particularly the impact of drugs, alcohol, and technology on the developing adolescent brain. So it was, like Bill said, it was better attended than we anticipated, we almost ran out of food, and that was nerve-wracking, but it was terrific, over two hundred people attended, there were teens, which we were surprised at, two teachers at the high school, actually, Trish Armstrong, the wellness teacher, and Suzanne Strauss, the English teacher, offered homework passes to their students to come, and an extra homework pass if you brought a parent. So we had lots of teenagers there, which was terrific and unexpected. City Councilor Bill Dwight and Marion Labarge were both there, which was important and meaningful. The district attorney was there, Massachusetts Department of Public Health was represented, there were police officers there, it was just really, lots of parents, it was a terrific, terrific event. So the evening started off with Bill Dwight giving some remarks, we had, Northampton has a new, Northampton High School has a new health education theater troupe called Caught Off Guard, and they did their first presentation, they developed a little skit based on the teen brain, which is great, so they had their first presentation. And Dr. Jennifer Michaels, the medical director of the Brain Center in the Berkshires, gave the keynote presentation about alcohol, marijuana, drug use technology on the developing brain. And it was really well-received, and I think parents reflected to us that they learned a lot that they didn't know, things like the teen brain isn't done developing until the age of twenty-five, things we've probably said here, but that not all parents knew. You know, the front part of the brain is the last part of the brain to finish developing, and that's the part that controls reasoning and impulses, which may explain a lot if there are any teenagers in your lives. And so, this is important, and the way substances interact on the teenager's brain is not the same way that they interact on adult brains, and there are, there can be longstanding ramifications. So, anything else to add from, about the biology of the brain that sort of highlights? No? Okay. That's also, the fact that the front part of the brain isn't finished, isn't finished developing until last, and that's the part that controls reasoning and impulses, is another reason why teenagers really need communities that are set up so that the healthy choice is the easy choice, because the easy choice is often the one that they're making, so. Anyway, feedback was very good, we were extremely pleased. I don't know if you had any comments about the event? You were happy with it?
I actually got, I've spoken with several people about the event, and the issues brought up in the event, and yes, it was significant. I think some people went, not really knowing what they were going to walk into, and came from it with a sense of some holistic discussion without the agenda that they thought that they were expecting.
That, we're glad for that.
Yeah, and just as you said, focused on a community discussion about the challenges that arise, the reason they exist, the conflicts that we all struggle with, and more importantly, it was interesting because of the debunking of a lot of myths or long-held fallacies that relative to substance use and abuse, so that was, yeah, good, it was good feedback.
Yeah, the most common thing, we also heard, the second most common thing was, please do more of these, which we've already got the next one in the works, so.
Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Labarge, that's right.
Also, right after that meeting, we had an advisory board meeting in the DA's office, and it was brought up about that. It was unbelievable, and I want to thank you and your committee for the hard work putting that in place. I mean, there was at least over two hundred people in there.
Yeah, it was terrific.
And I didn't expect to see all these people myself. It was well-attended, well-organized, and it was very educational. Thank you both.
I should say that the district attorney made a point of saying that this is, you know, essentially their hallmark program in the state, by his reckoning, that this is one of the most effective, and has more of an influence in the community than any of the other programs that he's encountered, so he's...
That's great to hear, we're really hoping this has sort of energized the coalition, and will kick-start all of our work, and bring some of it into the limelight. So with that, I'll just end with a couple of projects that we're working on now that I would actually like to plug. So one of our current, there's a lot, I won't do all of them, but one of our current projects is that we're actually accepting applications from parents of teenagers in Northampton for our Safe Homes Directory, which if parents agree that they're not going to serve alcohol at teens in their home, they're not going to allow kids to drink or outward use drugs in their home, and they're open to communication with other parents, which we know is protective, then they sign up for the Safe Homes Directory, their name is printed, their name and contact information is printed in the directory, and the directory goes out to all families at Northampton High School, JFK Middle School, and Smith Vocational School. And right now, sign-up is online, so northhamptonprevents.org if you've got a teenager, and it's extremely easy, so, yeah, we're excited about that project. Lots of other things in the works, but I won't take up your time tonight.
And I'll just say, the Safe Homes Directory, this is the third year that we've done it. The first year, I think we had about forty parents signed up in total, and we've easily tripled that, probably quadrupled it in the third year, so.
Any councils have any questions?
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you both, thanks. Thanks. Thanks for, now you know what the capital plan's like, too, and I'm sure that was well worth coming out.
I actually feel enlightened, I do. I have people come forward.
Now, the next, the next agenda item is petition for a request, I'm not sure, do you...
I thought you had mentioned taking that forward.
That's what I thought.
I would go along with that suggestion, and so that the folks who are here on that...
I agree.
Is that the council's pleasure?
Surely.
All right, so why don't we do that, we'll move, we'll move to, I will read this upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narckwitz in the Community Preservation Committee, whereas the Historical Commission submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding the state hospital fountain project, and whereas the project leverages additional public and or private funds, whereas the fountain meets the definition of a historic resource as defined by MGL 44B, whereas the fountain has been determined to be a relic of significant local history by the Northampton Historical Commission, and whereas on November seventh, two thousand and twelve, the November Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend seventy-five thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project, now therefore be ordered that seventy-five thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding the state hospital project, and that the guarantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, and that the park will be permanently protected through city ownership or conservation restrictions, specifically seventy-five thousand dollars is appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve.
Second.
Second. Now, there are members here from the committee that if you want to recognize for purposes of questions, or, do you hear a motion of that effect?
Yes.
Yes.
It's all moved.
Second, okay. Are they ever recognizing the members of the CAC and...
And CPC.
CPC.
Okay, so we've got all the Cs.
Yep.
Okay, and we'll get to speak to the motion.
I'll speak to the motion. When this came up at our last meeting, it was actually my own fault that I didn't know enough about it, and I was concerned, and part of it was labeling this as a park, and seeing the amount of money and the fountain, and I just, this just wasn't an issue that I'd followed, there wasn't much of a presentation, and though I think that the CPC is one of our great committees, the work they do has always been stellar, and their process, I was concerned about the location, I was concerned about the amount of money, I was concerned that there wasn't fundraising. But in fact, it was really, it was my mistake for not knowing, and if we had taken a vote, it was tabled, if we had taken a vote, I was going to vote for it in first reading, but express those concerns and find out more. And since that, I've spoken to a number of people, and I am going to support this this evening. I think that this has gone through a long process, which I just didn't know about, should have known about it, but I didn't. I think that my concern about the location, and now knowing where the fountain is going to go, and that I was concerned that it was, and I had misinformation, again, my fault, that it was somehow being placed in an area where, kind of like way off for no reason, and it's not, it's being placed, as we heard this evening, the fountain's being placed in an appropriate position, and in fact, you know, I had heard a few people say, well, why don't, why don't we have memorial somewhere else, where everybody could see it, and, you know, at first I thought, well, that's not a bad idea, but as I, you know, other people have mentioned, the Sojourner Truth Memorial, you put it where the event is, where the impact is, and I think this is the appropriate place for the fountain. So, for a number of reasons, I believe the work has gone into this for many years, and I think the CPC's work on this has been excellent, and again, it was my fault last time when I was expressing negative concerns, I just didn't know about it. And so I'm going to support this strongly when the motion comes up.
Any other comments? Counselor Labarge?
I'd like to recognize the mayor, please, and also recognize Wayne Fiden at the same time.
Could you speak with me about it, and then we'll, Mr. Fiden is actually, because he's a laborer to this project, I'd rather have him discuss, so I'll just answer your questions, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to know what the size of that land is.
So I brought you, I brought, actually, a map for, you had asked me about that, and I can show it to you, and you can pass it along. You'll see here where all the single-family building lots are, and then this is where the memorial fountain is going to be. So I've asked, essentially, that is, they believe that the land on which that's going to be placed is the size of a full building lot, that they could build a single-family home on, they actually would require some additional planning board approvals, but that is an area, you can see on the plan, there's two trees at the back of where the fountain are, and one of the commitments they've made is to try to preserve old-growth trees. So that's a lot that they had decided that they would allow, that they thought would be appropriate for the memorial, for all the reasons we've talked about, but it is essentially the equivalent of a buildable lot. So when you and I were talking about what possible values are, they put a value of ten thousand dollars on it, which they believe is a very accurate representation, given that that's a building lot that they could sell for seventy-five thousand, you know, for a single-family home, if that's how the plan had proceeded. So in terms of, in terms of what you're seeing there, that's where it's going to be placed. And I can, I know that you asked the question about the exact measurements, I'm going to try to get that for you, but I wanted...
try to get that for you, but I wanted to at least show you how it fits in with all the other building lots, and then there's that gap of a building lot that's not being used for a building lot, but being used for the memorial.
Okay. In this picture that we've been given, in 1960, I saw that fountain. I also went into the main building, into the lower halls, lower one, lower two, throughout that whole building, and even in where we used to have the tunnels, I made tours on that. I was very upset when they took that building down, the old main building. That's where the outcry was in this city, which was the Old Main Building, and it's a shame they did take that down. I find a tremendous amount of value in that fountain. I've seen it, it's, it needs to be there. There's no question about it. I've had several members of my husband's side of the family who were nurses there themselves for many, many years and retired. I had several friends also who were LPNs and RNs at that time, going through training, through nursing. I met supervisors there from the Northampton State Hospital. It is of historical value. There's no question about it. It's been there since way back in the 1800s, and I'm going to support this project 100% even though there is questions about the cost of it, how much fundraising has, you know, occurred with this. I agree with Consular Specter in regards to a lot of research that consuls need to do to find out information. I did get my information just by what we did for the past two weeks. I got all the minutes from the committee. There was concerns about the cost of the project itself, and there should be concerns about that, because as a consular, I received calls about the significant amount of money for this project. But I'm supporting it because I know about the whole area itself, I was born and raised in this city, I'm going to say it again. It is a significance here to the city of Northampton, to all employees, all patients, and I know many patients that are still here, living here in the city of Northampton and in Florence. So I think this is an honor, and I will support it.
Could I just recount one other thing that you and I talked about when we had our conversation yesterday, and that was just, I know that there was a letter to the paper a couple of days ago indicating that, you know, the city has water and sewer needs, and it has a number of other capital needs, and that this $75,000 should really be put toward those. I just want to emphasize that this $75,000 is coming from a dedicated account for historic preservation, that by law, we're required to create, 10% of the CPA dollars must go into that. So those funds can only be used for historic preservation. We obviously, as we heard earlier, have a number of capital needs, but those particular dollars, if they're not used for this historic preservation project, they can only be used for a historic project recommended by the CPA. So I just, that was something I know we talked about, and I wanted to make sure that that conversation got out on the public record.
Thank you.
Before Old Main was taken down, some folks may probably remember, I don't know if anybody else went through in the year 2000, when there was an incredible art installation...
Oh, yeah.
Where the Bach Magnifica was broadcast through the windows of the Old Main and surrounding buildings to let the souls out in an old tradition. And that was, at the time, there was still a lot of talk in the city about how, or if, we might still be able to save the building. But I'm really happy now that Old Main has been taken down, that there is something beyond just, you know, a memorable event that happened in 2000, but actually will be a place that people will be able to visit and reminisce about a very important time in Northampton history. So I'll support this as well.
Counsel Tacey?
This was pretty helpful, the detail, the sheet, the expenditures. Like a lot of people in this room, I remember the State Hospital in its heyday, when it was really, when it was really common, I guess I want to say. I have a lot of my family members that worked there and retired from there over the years, and there's, there is a lot of emotion that I actually remember, and I know we're talking about the State Hospital, but even at the VA, at the time when lobotomies were commonplace, when it was just a matter of fact. And so there's a lot of things, and I sympathize with a lot of people that would like to just as soon forget a lot of this, and, but still, it's a part of our community. And I have a lot of people on my ward that aren't happy about spending the money on such an obscure or off-the-beaten-path location, and, but I'm going to support it, but I really would like to see, I know that there's building lots up there that are for sale...
$50,000.
With builders, for $50,000, and it just seems to me that there can be more done for fundraising up there, especially from those that would benefit the most from anything, any element that you would install up there with tax dollars. We have 20 lots or so on a project I'm on, lots for $150,000 or less, but in that ballpark. So if you look at a building lot for $50,000, it seems to me that, and I'm sure that maybe there's no break on the actual sale price of the home, but that's okay, in a sense. But I would like to see more fundraising done, and I think that possibly the developers up there could probably throw in a little more money, and maybe not so much of the CPA money would be used, it could go back to the CPA, if that's at all possible. But I do believe that there is more room for fundraising up there on that site.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Yeah. I just wanted to address that comment, because I know that that was raised at the last meeting, I was trying to pull it up, but I think one of the things you have to look at is, are those peccoy lots that you're discussing. Look at the size of the actual lots versus perhaps the size that you're talking about. I did have a conversation with the project manager because of those concerns. They're quasi-state agency, they have a procurement process that they have to go through in terms of hiring people that are brokers, they also have to go through a process, they have to get an appraisal done on land, they have a market rate appraisal that they receive, and they sell the land based on that market rate appraisal. So, and I can try to get more detailed information about you, but those peccoy lots are very, very small building lots that are selling for $50,000. So that may be another consideration. I was trying to pull up exactly the size of it for you, but they're a very small, small lot that they're being, that they're purchasing for $50,000. So just to make sure that we understand that they are state agency and that they are not selling land at discount, they're trying to, they have to follow some of the protocols that we have to follow in terms of getting market rate appraisals.
Well, I'm concerned if we're discussing lot sale prices, that we're moving from the color of the question, so I'm concerned...
No, we're talking about fundraising, we're talking about the actual cost.
That I understand, and I think we've clarified that point. So beyond that, when we start discussing how much the property's worth, I think we're straying from the color of the discussion. And I'll get back to you, we go to Counsel Freeman Daniels, and if you have a follow-up, we can do that.
I want to thank Counsel Tacey for taking this seriously, especially with the budget, but the way I read, I actually read it a little differently from how you read it. It looks to me as though $100,000 was requested from the CPC, and CPC is recommending only 75. And when 100 was requested, the expectation was to raise, looked like about seven, in cash. And I'd actually like to ask Donnie Meyer to come forward and talk about how he sees what the funding decision, why the funding decision was for 75, and how he sees this, and why that was that number when 100 was on the budget, and what you foresee as far as the community's response.
So I have my notes here that I, as we sit and we consider each proposal, I use the proposal and write down, as each committee member makes a comment, two of the comments, my shorthand is budget and budget, you know, when we first go through and talk about them. We start from a variety of committees, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, we look at a lot of plans, we're familiar with project proposals, and being on the CPC, we also see a lot of them submitted. We looked at the budget and felt that particular items were higher, having just gone through the Florence Field project, really large budgets, we looked at, for instance, the project management cost of $19,100, and we thought that that was high as a percentage of the total budget. Also, the 20% contingency. So we looked at these items, and we actually, you know, always want to justify giving a full award. And the other thing is that we do like to increase the community participation, you know, we would like to see our money as seed money, and if we fund a project fully, then to a certain extent, we've done the work for the community. So here, the applicant had proposed doing fundraising, and part of the reason that committee members talked about for funding this at a lower amount was that we wanted to see the park be something that the community came together to design and fundraise for. So the specific rationale was that we thought that the fountain restoration should be fully funded, and so we thought $42,000 was what was supported by the application, and then we looked at the amount that was requested, $48,000, and gave a portion, a portion of that, with the anticipation that the proponent would raise the rest of the money from the community.
Thank you.
Counsel Tacey, did you give any...
Yeah, I don't think anybody really understands just exactly the cost of putting together building lots and streets and construction and engineering, that is all borne by a developer, which means you have to get a certain dollar amount for a lot, regardless of the size of the lot. Makes no difference whatsoever. When you just go up and purchase a lot for $50,000, I don't care if the lot is a postage stamp, developers have to put up half of the property that they own for conservation. So it's an expensive project for a developer. So you, so my point is, there is, I don't see any reason why the developers cannot come up with a little bit more money, period. And I'll argue development, development cost, lot size, planning, engineering, whatever, but I intend to support this project, I said that already. But I don't want to get into a big argument about that, because it'll just go too long. But I know that whether anybody wants to admit it or not, these lot sizes and costs have actually muddied a lot of waters for real estate in the city. That is the point I want to make.
I would just say that we do, we do, when applicants do come back to us with money, and we, you know, when we have a budget, if the applicant can do it for less, we don't ever hand them more than they spend. What happens is there's an authorization, there's an appropriation to spend, and they have to present invoices to CPC staff, and only that money is given to them to basically reimburse whoever they're hiring. So if they are very successful in fundraising, then the money will come back to the CPC. And of course, especially with an applicant like the Historic Commission, who is, you know, that's an entity that will come before us, that reflects favorably upon them in terms of future applications.
To point of information, Counsel Tacey, do you, when you say developer, do you mean
mass development, or do you mean the builders? Do you mean the builders?
The actual development of the particular, the subdivision.
So the builders?
No, the subdivision, the guy that has to build the streets.
So you don't mean mass development? You're talking, okay, so I think we are, I'm not sure if everybody understood that.
Mass development did build the streets and the infrastructure, so just to clear that.
So that's who you're talking about? You're talking about mass development building the streets and dividing up the parcels, not the builders?
That's right. So then the builder buys a lot for $50,000. Those lots are for sale only to that particular builder for $50,000. Everything else has been developed.
Okay, excuse me, again, I think that to the point, we're talking about authorizing CPC money for the memorialization fountain, so I think...
So let me just add, I think that there's money to be found from the builders, who stand to make profit from the building of the properties, but I also, I concur with the mayor that they, that the developer, mass development, is not going to be in the position to contribute more than the lot to this project.
They actually have also paid for the design services to design the memorial.
Then they're going beyond that.
So they've given those services as well to the project.
And I looked, I just did a test. I did an eye test on the lot, it looks as though it's maybe about 150 feet of frontage, just FYI.
Which is 50 feet of frontage more than 20 lots that I have for sale for $150,000.
Let's speak in turn, Counsel Specter, then Counsel LaBarge.
I think we are getting a little off-point, except for the one piece. I think what we're trying to say is, as a consul, we're trying to say we would like private, there should be private money, both from developers and from the builders and from the community at large, contribute as much as they possibly can to this project, and if it's really meaningful, they could. And so I think that's really what, correct, that's what we're saying, that there really should be a fundraising effort, and I hear there will be a fundraising effort, and I think we're all in agreement, that we should get as much as we can from the folks who are building there, developing there, and from the outside community. And unless anyone else wants to speak to something else, I think I'm ready to call the question.
Counsel LaBarge?
Thank you. Mayor, you're correct about the site design. At 1,261, that is a fair price on that. I mean, you're looking at doing the survey, the design work, and you're also looking at bringing water to it. So that is not a bad price. You're not going to bring water to it?
It's not going to be running water at the fountain, no.
It's just going to stand there?
It'll just be a stagnant state.
Oh.
Unless somebody wants to introduce...
Okay.
Counsel Schwartz?
Move it.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all the people who've worked so hard on this. I think it's a very meaningful, important project, and I really appreciate the time and energy spent in making it happen. So thank you very much, and I'd like to call the question.
Well, actually...
I can't call the question.
Who has asked for... Of course.
Counsel Murphy?
As the apparent ringleader of dissent, I was descended upon since our last meeting by all sorts of well-meaning folks, try and sway my position, and I want to perfect my dissent, because I still have that dissent, but I don't object to memorializing the State Hospital. I mean, certainly, it was an extremely enlightened thing for the Commonwealth to do in its time. I mean, it's, the architecture is beautiful. I wish the Commonwealth still had that architect when they did the Registry of Deeds, because it's a beautiful building in comparison, and very enlightened. I mean, it was, they built it, and they built several of these campuses in idyllic, hilltop locations around the Commonwealth, because they perceived, I think at the time, that we were transitioning from an agrarian society to an industrial society. And I think they deduced that mental illness was to some extent, had put people, not to digress too much, but in dire straits because of industrial disease. And so they said, gee, let's create an asylum from the Industrial Revolution and put these people in an idyllic sense, let them go back to the agrarian lifestyle, and that should calm them down. And what we learned from that was mental illness is much more complex than that, but I think it was very well-intentioned when they did it. So I don't object to memorializing the State Hospital. And I think the fountain itself is a beautiful Victorian fountain, I mean, the Queen was still around herself when they put that in. So I don't object to memorializing the State Hospital, and I certainly have great regard for the proponents of this, Mr. Horner, Mr. Dolls, Mr. Meyer, I mean, they... I mean, they put a lot of effort into many meaningful activities that have benefited Northampton greatly, and I, this one, I think, is justified as well. What I do object to is putting it in such an isolated location. I think of two other fountains. I think one that Counselor Rayland LaBarge paid for out of pocket to fix, another one that Counselor Tacey is telling, selling t-shirts to try and fix. And I think what we take from this, Counselor Tacey, is that we should go to CPC and get funding for our fountain. Both of them are in extremely public locations where people actually see them. They're not, you know, buried in a residential subdivision somewhere. So my objection really is to the location. For $75,000, I'd like to see this somewhere where more of the public will actually see it and benefit from it. In front of the Haskell Building, out on the, on the street where it can be seen, sooner or later, we're going to get to Velasquez Park, let's put it down there. I don't object to the project. I love the people proposing it. I just like to see it somewhere where the rank-and-file citizen will have a chance to run into the thing, because where it is, is really isolated for that amount of money. So that's really my objection. It's location, not that it isn't a quality project, or it's well, it's well-conceived and sponsored by good folks. I just don't like where it is for $75,000. I just don't think the typical citizen is going to get $75,000 worth of exposure to it. So that, that is why I am not going to support it. But it quite clearly has support, and it's quite clearly going forward.
Is there any other discussion on this point? Let's, all right, let's call for vote here. All those in favor of supporting and approving this request for.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
No.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
And thank you, thank you for your discussion and the time that you've invested in this. I really appreciate it. Thank you all. And now we'll get back to the regular order of business.
And this is, that was in first reading, just so you know. So there's, there's another, there'll be a second reading of the first meeting of.
January 6.
New year, January 6.
January 3.
January 3.
Is it?
Yeah.
January 3.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. January 6, if you show up here the 6.
Okay. We'll do our own readings.
This is a petition to accept the public way presently, which is a private way, Hillcrest Drive, from its intersection with Bridge Road to its intersection with Sheffield Lane. Move approval. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey.
I'm very familiar with Hillcrest. I, as a kid, we rode our mini bikes and everything on that particular piece of woods, and it was the track that got us out to Broad Brook, which has now become Fitzgerald's Lake. And I'm sure Counselor Murphy is very familiar with the piece of property also. I watched the road being constructed, and I cannot believe, and I was dumbfounded to find out that it was not accepted as a city street, but it was built to city specs. Everything about it was done to subdivision standards, and everybody was dumbfounded. I just couldn't believe it had not been accepted. It's a beautiful street, everything is monumented, it is just one particular street, one element of the construction that was missed, and that was the move to accept it. And I don't know how it didn't happen, and I am extremely happy to support, this is one of the easiest ones that we're ever going to have to accept, and I am absolutely 110 or 50 or 200% in favor of accepting the street.
Counsel Spector.
262% in favor, even more than, one of the things we've learned, just so other councils can hear, when we're in the conference committee, the DPW Conference Committee, that some of these streets, it just, it just didn't happen. It just, for some reason, you have a street, there's absolutely no reason why it wasn't approved, and the fact is past everything, as you said. So I just want to make sure people know that. There are a few of these streets, there are a couple more coming forward, and I think it just never came forward to the council. Yeah. But I'm not the chair, am I? But the chair is pulling around over there.
The chair is, yes.
Did the chair play a tendency?
It just sort of formalizes it, just so you understand, that the street is the DMZ between Ward 5 and Ward 7 in that area. So Counselor Tacey has one side of the street, and I have the other. And the residents on both sides will be delighted that their street is a street now.
And I think I've already assured them it would be plowed this particular year.
Just one half of it, though.
Yes.
But it goes along, in 1995, we accepted 50, or '96, we accepted 51 city streets. And it was a big cleanup job at, at that year, and now we're back at it again here, and we have another, I don't know how many, but this one is simple.
Well, this comes with a recommendation from the Planning Board and from. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the street acceptance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Two readings.
No. Done and done. All right. Now we're up to the capital projects. Upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, the following capital projects be appropriated from the general fund FY13 cash capital account.
Mr. Chair, could we waive?
Waive the reading?
Again, since we just.
Okay. The total, I'll give you the total amount on this, and I'll, do you want me to just tick off what you're?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. This is to subsidize building inspections, central services, removal of the in-ground oil tanks, central services ADA access to municipal building and council chambers, the Northampton Public Schools grounds maintenance dump truck, Northampton Public Schools transfer switches and portable generator, Northampton Public Schools video surveillance system upgrade at the high school, the RK Finn Ryan Road School chimney stack repair, two administrative vehicles, and the police department to replace, for that's, for the police department also to replace pistols for a total of $250,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. This is for central services, the roof at the Academy of Music, the Northampton Public Schools Capital Technology Improvement Plan, the ambulance leasing arrears down payment for fire department, the Department of Public Works Mechanics area slab repairs, and DPW Water Street, Water Street Bridge repairs, for a total of $353,587.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I had the opportunity to actually inspect the bridge with the Department of Transportation on Water Street, and it is in dire need of repair. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you.
Is that the old, the old metal bridge?
This is $6,058.37 for, to upgrade the hearing room in the, in City Hall. $9,655.87 for the City Hall exterior, exterior upgrade. $1,333.2 for City Hall purbing, a total of $17,046.97. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? This is $545,000 to be appropriated for the purchase and equipping of a frontline attack fire engine for the fire department and meet that obligation appropriate to the following funds. $299,358 from FY13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, and $210,000, $210,000, $210,142 from receipts, receipts reserved for appropriation, and reprogram $35,000 originally allocated in FY11 capital plan for the purchase of an EMS response vehicle towards the purchase of equipment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? This is a total of $300,013. This is as amended. Be appropriated for the purchase and equipping of a dump truck for the DPW and to meet the obligation appropriate, $243,160 from FY13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, and reprogram $40,362.23, not 233, from account 3,000. 12, blah, 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 blah. For the DPW capital vehicles and $16,477.90 from the account for DPW capital vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I want to get clear here. What happens with that 13 cents if it's not spent?
Goes to you.
Because we're appropriating $300,013. What happens to that 13 cents and any other unspent funds if it's not?
Change. The stuff that falls on the couch seats.
This is on the, this is on the.
Dump truck.
The dump truck project. Well, like we've, like we've seen in some of these other projects, if there are unexpended funds that don't get used, then we can seek your authority to reprogram them. Or, or, in some, in some case, they, if it's, the fact that these aren't borrowings, then those funds, I have to check on whether they would, whether they would float of free cash or not, but we could certainly, I mean, the capital plan consists already of other projects where there were funds that weren't spent on capital projects, so we would, again, we track those and we'll seek to reprogram them. So I may come forward with an order for, you know, seven cents, it could be eight cents, it could be 13 cents, you know, we may come forward with that.
Be elected official compensation.
Exactly.
Exactly. We could devote it to that, exactly. Split it nine ways.
Any other discussion on this? Do they make hate pennies anymore? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
I sense it's I sense.
$22,000 to be appropriated for the Spring Grove Cemetery Roof Repairs, and to meet that obligation appropriate, $11,894.31 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund, and reprogram $6,288.69. Spring Grove, from Spring Grove Roof Repairs, and $3,817 from the, I'm not going to read you the account number, but for DPW Roof Repairs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? And this is $500,000 from the FY13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, be appropriated for the Capital Stabilization Fund. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. This is in second reading? Oh, yes, we need to appoint a enrollment committee as Counselor Adams is one of the committee members. So Counsel LaBarge, would you do the honors with Counsel Tacey?
Oh, yeah. I'll do it.
So.
Pass them over.
This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, $250,000 is appropriated for cost of flood control construction. Do you want me to read the whole?
No.
Wave reading.
Order, okay.
We've gone through that.
Is there a motion to?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? This is also second reading. This is relative to the tourism gift account. What's your preference for the reading?
Move to postpone, actually.
Postpone it.
Does the motion?
I make, I second that motion.
Second?
To January 17.
To January, to a date specific, January 17? Counsel LaBarge, do you have a question?
When Mary Casper was talking in the open public session, I wasn't sure, I didn't hear what the date was of their meeting. Do you know?
Yeah, it's, it's the 9th.
Yeah.
It was the 9th?
This would be the week before.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor postponing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Postponed till? This is a second reading. This is on the Historical Commission gift account. Would you prefer that I read this, or?
Didn't read it.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? An abstentions? Thank you. This is first reading?
Second.
This is second reading as well, okay. This is.
Can I, can I offer that we take all CPA funding projects as a group?
There you go.
The second.
Yes.
All CPA, okay, all, what's being proposed by Counselor Freeman Daniels is that we take the remainder of the CPA projects for second reading as a group.
Second.
That's a council plan. Do you want to separate something?
I'd like to separate item number 14.
Yeah, that's friendly.
Okay. So for, with, with the exception of the financial order for the Community Preservation Act funding the Connecticut River Greenway Project, everything else moved as a group?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, I second it.
Okay.
That orders 12, 13, 15, and 16 are taken as a group.
Yes, okay. And there's a second from you, Counsel LaBarge. Any discussion on any of these items? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. All right. And this is now relative to the multi-use trail plan, Sustainable Northampton Plan. This is the Connecticut River Greenway Project, of course, which was parsed out. Would anyone like to move this?
So move.
Second.
All right. Discussion, please.
Yes.
Counsel Tacey.
This park grant, we did a 600 and, I'm going to go back a little further, a couple of years back, we had a photo op or a, where we got $100,000 from the secretary, which all leads up to this. We attended it, Peter Colcutt, the secretary, I think our, Mayor Narcoits was there, when we accepted the first $100,000. And even prior to that, there was a conversation from former counselor-at-large Jim Dostal with property owners for the acquisition of a piece of land and access to the Mill River or things such as docks and a boathouse, when it got started. It then went to $100,000 that we got from Secretary Sullivan, and the big discussion at the lane construction property was boathouse. Then the city council at the JFK School, we appropriate, or authorized a bond authorization or borrowing authorization, excuse me, for some $650,000. The discussion was boathouse. And it was all for this, the application to get a park grant. Now, we have the park grant, and I brought it up at our last meeting, that my objection to it was the same as I had before about not having any of the financials or anything, the development for this piece of property, and what it was going to cost, and it went into different unexplained eggs at the JFK School. When I tried to talk about it at the last meeting, and it even says in the email that we got before the last meeting, from Director Wayne Biden, that it says, "The Connecticut River Greenway property with this $400,000 and hopefully a match CPA that City Council votes on tonight, and fundraising by the Northampton Youth and Community Rowing. We expect to close on the property in February, finish the design this spring, and in the summer develop the site into a riverfront park with site work, access to the river, and docks. The first phase of the project does not include a boathouse." Hopefully more on that sometime in the future. The whole thing, and my objection to it in the first, at JFK, was the same thing. I don't know where this money is coming from, to develop all this property, to bring utilities onto this site. This, don't insult my intelligence by telling me this does not say boathouse on it. This all says boathouse. And I, I don't know where the money is coming from. We're looking to, we're looking to ask people to pay more money for everything. And now, where's this $1.2 million coming from? Utilities in there. Utilities in there. The DPW is starved as it is. DPW needs more money. I would, somewhere along the line, out of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, the city of Northampton gets seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grant money, four hundred thousand dollars for this, and that was the good news. The, it was a photo shoot. The, we got two big styrofoam checks, and then that was the good news, and right after that, we talk about statewide, we talk about cuts to veterans' benefits, we talk about cuts to special education, cuts to everything. And so, somewhere along the line, I, we need to reprioritize, we need to figure out just exactly where we're spending this money, uh, because don't forget, we have authorized the borrowing of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a meeting, which now we will rescind, but not yet, because we don't know what's going to happen with the fiscal cliff. That was the big concern. I asked about, are we going to rescind this borrowing, and I, I spoke with, um, the Director of Planning, Wayne Fiden, today, and he says, "Well, not yet, because we want to see what happens if we're gonna..." Well, anyway, I think there's too many things here that are absolutely unanswered, and for, for me to even think about spending, I think somewhere along the line, these park grants have got to stop. If we get seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in park grants, uh, and then they cut veterans' benefits, uh, out of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, how much money is the state spending on this, and they still continue to cut our schools? So anyway, I, 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 and I'm opposed to it on just the morals of it, just, uh...
Noted. Uh, Council Specter?
Actually, can, can we, uh...
Recognize Wayne.
Recognize Wayne Fiden?
Thank you.
Uh, all those in favor?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor recognizing Wayne Fiden? Thank you.
Wayne, so could I, so...
Please.
So, could, could you explain, maybe address some of Council Tacey's concerns, if you can, about the separation between the boathouse and the property here? Uh, one question I would have, would we have gotten this park grant if there was never a boathouse mentioned? Did it help in getting the park grant to say, "Look, there's also a community boathouse that might be on the property"? Was there, what, what's the relationship between getting grants and what will hope, and it's not even definite, but what may be on the property in the future? So, we certainly, I mean, we use the, the money which Representative Coakot got us to master plan the site, to plan the site as a riverfront park, which is a freestanding park without a boathouse, that's what we're talking about now, and to master plan where a boathouse would go. So we certainly have looked at the site as, where would we like to go, you know, if there's money that's available? And so, certainly boathouse is part of that vision for the site. But if a boathouse never happens, it's still a good project. It still makes sense in terms of opening up the access to the river, and of course, the boathouse has lots of options within it. One, one option is somebody has a fancy boathouse that has heating, but a more likely option is as a pole barn where canoes and kayaks and rowing shells could be stored, and that could be a totally privately fundraised project. So, you know, the short answer is, yes, we master plan the site, yes, we certainly have detailed plans to show where a boathouse would be, but the property makes perfect sense to that. And if a boathouse was there and it needed things, it needed utilities, as Council Tacey was pointing out, that we could say, "Well, the boathouse is going to have to pay for that," or it may not need any utilities if it's just a, you know, a storage shed for the, for the various boats. But right now, I, I don't really see where there'd be other funds that are needed, there's, aren't other development things projected for that area, is that correct? That's correct. There aren't walkways that'll be lit, there aren't other things like that being planned right now or that are definite in this project? Our assumption as part of this project is that Northampton Youth and Community Rowing, who's a big advocate for this, is going to take care of those sorts of causes. So, you know, we don't need lights as an informal park. If they need a boathouse, they wanted to have a building for masters to row in the morning, when they want lights, then they'd be paying for that bill. Okay. So let me just make a comment, because it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, that, and this kind of ties into, we just had a project that some of us were concerned about the cost, uh, on the fountain. I think this is a perfect example of, hey, if the boathouse is going to happen, other people are going to raise the funds for the boathouse, and it's a way to make the whole project a win-win. And if there are going to be utilities needed, you could say, "Well, you want to bring utilities to the boathouse? Bring the utilities in, but you're going to have to raise the funds to do that." Um, I, I understand your question about the moral concern that we're taking this money and where's it coming from. So, I mean, one of the things we could say, "Well, maybe we shouldn't take any money for a lot of things." We've seen that happen, some states say, "We're not going to take grants from the federal government because they're spending too much money." I'm not one of those people who would support that. I think this is a grant that, this is an incredible project. We have very little access for the citizens of Northampton to the river, and to object to this project as, as the one to make a moral stand, I think is just the, the wrong way to go.
Council LeBard, and then Council Freeman Daniels.
I supported it on the first reading, I'm supporting it again on the second reading. It's for the land. And I also feel, which I have to echo from Councilor Specter, if they do someday decide to put up a boathouse, look at the one that we have right now. The rowing team, Jonathan Wright, and a whole bunch of parents have worked very hard on fundraising. So I agree about the fundraising. My concern is, we are voting on the land. And I agree about the openness that it will have, the connection by the river with the trails, so I think this is a beginning. It's, it's a good idea.
Council Freeman Daniels.
What's your call on the fiscal cliff again? I just want to get this for the record.
I think Council Tacey may have been confusing two different conversations. We were also talking about the park and ride laws.
Ah, okay.
We are trying to move it through and ask in two readings because we're in transportation money.
Got it.
That doesn't affect this project.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Council Tacey?
I don't, I don't think we're just voting on the land. We all approved the gift of land from the Lane Construction Company. So that's not, we're not voting on the land.
See, you've already voted on the gift of land, you've already voted on accepting the park grant.
Right.
What this is about is the CPA money, which is the match for, which lets us go forward in the whole project.
Right. So, and again, uh, I'll just say briefly that I think I would like to have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our stormwater, so I would like to get, I would rather have the state think about how they're spending this and give us that money in different areas where we could figure out just exactly where we could use it. Look at Milton Street and Orman Street and things such as that, and Kennedy Road. Everything. So anyway, I'll leave it alone, but I think that, uh, it's wrong, and I, I don't intend to support it, because I think we're, I think we're taking too much park grant money, and I think this is all, uh, it's all about, if they're going to give us this money, we have to get it from somewhere. They have to cut it from somewhere to give us this money. And where are we cutting it from? Veteran services? Special education? So somewhere along the line, somebody has to take a stand and say, "Look, in this, these fiscal times, if we had a load of money, this would be fine. I'd be happy to support it, but I'll tell you..."
Council Tacey, we're, we're talking about CPC money here at this point, and this is actually, we know where this is coming from, we know that it's dedicated to this, and it's not coming from veterans and services and, and roads repairs or anything else. It's actually coming from the citizens of Northampton who voted to authorize a, a special tax to be collected to be used for projects of this type. This is what this vote is on. The, the, to take issue with other aspects of this, that's fine, and I, and I understand your objection. The fact is, is that is not what we're being asked to vote on today. So just, so we stay clear on that and keep the conversation to that point, I'd appreciate it. Any other questions?
We're always talking about the big picture.
I think talking about the big picture is a very worthy conversation, but it's not when we, we, when we speak to the big picture on every issue. We could do that with every CPC project here, and we'll die of old age.
You can't say that you can take it up on the big picture just because it's not on the agenda.
No, I, we actually, Counselor, and I don't, I don't want to argue this point, but the fact is that we are obliged to speak to the issues, the color of the issue, and stay on the color of the issue. That is our obligation here in these meetings. Uh, are there any other questions of Wayne Fiden, or are there any of the discussion relative to this? Uh, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
One objection? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, Council Murphy?
Could we take the two orders relative to dogs as a group?
Dogs, you want to, not, not one and two? Just the dogs? All right. Uh, excuse me, and this is on second reading as well. Uh, so is there, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. We're moving along, folks. We're actually hacking through this. There's a request for two readings on this, that's up for your consideration. This is upon the recommendation of the Office of Planning and Development. On September sixth, two thousand and seven, City Council authorized the city to accept a long-term lease for the park and ride lot at the Veterans Administration Hospital in Leeds, and the Mass DOT has agreed to build for the city, and whereas the VAM, the VAMC has agreed to allow the park and ride lot, but would prefer to do this as an easement instead of a lease. Whereas such a park and ride lot is consistent with the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plans, Transportation Policies, and Recommendations. Now therefore, excuse me, it be it ordered, the City Council authorizes the mayor to accept the lease for the park and ride lot at the Veterans Administration Medical Center in Leeds.
Move to approve.
Is this a, is this a late file?
This is a late file, and I would ask for a motion to suspend rules. So move?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move first reading?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I talked with, um, Wayne Fiden, the, it went from, um, a lease to an easement, and it's all seventy-five years, it appears to be the exact same thing, according to Wayne, um, so, uh, and this is something that I think is really, really needed in the city, so. Um, but the lease and easement, I understand, is exactly the same thing, and I don't know why they have a difference.
You, uh, Wayne Fiden's still here to talk to that issue, that's why he sat around most of the time, but it's...
Although I don't actually know, I mean, we don't care, the city doesn't care, it's the US government's preference to do an easement, so we're sort of neutral either version.
Any other questions, discussion?
No.
How did you know?
I just, I'm prescient.
The, the easement reverts back to the, to the Veterans Administration after the period of time?
Absolutely, yes, that's correct.
Seventy-five years.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's...
Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we know when this might happen, Wayne?
We'll get that on the second discussion.
Let's get, uh, suspend rules for second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor suspending rules for the second reading?
Aye.
Move second reading?
Second.
Uh, Council Tacey?
Yeah, just, do we have any idea when this construction, uh...
So that's the reason that the timing is important. Um, we've agreed on all the language with the VA, uh, and we're waiting for it to be signed. It was supposed to be advertised on December twenty-ninth, uh, which would be in spring construction. We're not going to make that just in terms of getting it signed. I mean, assuming nothing happens with the fiscal cliff, we hope it will be advertised this winter for spring construction, so it'll be two thousand and twelve construction, just in thirteen construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Let's move in second reading. This is in second reading, this is upon the recommendation of, uh, Council Owen Freeman Daniels, that the ordinance for, uh, the code of ordinances, wow, the typing's all messed up, but, do you guys want me to read this?
No.
No?
No.
No, you don't need to.
Uh, I actually, I'll accept a motion and, uh, second, allow, uh, Council Freeman Daniels...
Move to approve.
Second it.
Second.
And Council Freeman Daniels, want to give the thumbnail on this, then?
Didn't we discuss this last time?
We did, this is second reading, so.
Okay, so, uh, is this, this is approval criteria, this in the zoning code?
Yeah, this is the, um, language all...
It's just, it's, it's partially to bring us in compliance with state law, and then the other part is to, uh, at, use the Transportation Parking Commission, which is the ideal body for, um, review of traffic mitigation funds, as the, as the body to review traffic mitigation funds.
Authorizing an agency of oversight.
Right, that, right, insisting, actually.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Uh, this is also on the recommendation of Council Owen Freeman Daniels, it's on second reading, this is, uh, in, uh, cleanup of, uh...
It's the companion piece, it, I'm, I'm sorry, I move approval.
And is there a second?
Second.
Just quick discussion, this is the companion piece, authorized in the Transportation Parking Commission to do the duties outlined in the first piece.
Any other questions or discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Now...
Mr. Council President, ordinance four through eleven relating to dogs...
We're not quite there yet.
We're still on...
I don't understand parking spaces.
Now we got one more.
One more, this is, this is, uh, the, the municipally-owned, uh, parking spaces.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. Now...
Mr. Council President, item four through eleven relating to dogs, cats, ferrets, and the like, um, brings our code book into conformance with state law.
Are you making a motion?
And I would move we take them as a group.
I'll second that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please? Anyone want to talk to cats and dogs? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And they're asking for two readings?
To do second reading since the state law is already in force in the ordinances.
Well, they're requesting two readings.
So a motion for suspension of rules?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this through 11? Number 11?
Four through 11, yeah.
So this is again, on the motion to suspend rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading?
Second. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. We have two referrals here from Counsel Owen Freeman Daniels and Counsel William H. Dwight. The, the, these first, and then we get to the late files. Counsel, we'll, we'll, we'll get to them. This is, uh, this is, uh, two recommendations from Counsel Owen Freeman Daniels and Counselor William H. Dwight, an ordinance of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing the code of ordinances, the amended revising section 28-4 of said code, providing that the Committee on Economic Development, Housing, and Land Use be ordained by the City Council of the city of Northampton. City Council assembled as follows, the section 22-4 of the code of ordinances of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts, will be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Uh, membership, the sick, the formerly six, now proposed five members shall consist of four city councilors and a designee of the mayor. And do you want me to read the second as well? So, or would you like to move the, move them for referral separately or as a group?
Referral to ordinance.
Okay. Let's see, uh, okay, any, what's your preference? Do you want me to read the second one, too?
Sure.
It's essentially both, yeah, both of these, this one's to amend the membership of the member, this is the membership of the Finance Committee, which more or less is already done.
I'm moving both to ordinance.
Both being recommended to move to ordinance?
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? These are late files for referral. This is upon the recommendation of Counsel Paul D. Spector, ordinance of the city of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing the code of ordinances be amended by revising section 312-117 of said code, providing on-street and off-street handicap parking space be ordained by the City Council of the city of Northampton.